Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting for December 17th, 2019. Before we start our agenda, I want to take a moment just to recognize and the passing of a good friend of ours, Ed Conlins, who passed away last Thursday unexpectedly. Ed was a real stalwart in support of the Town of Camden, at least of which was most recent years as chairman of our Budget Committee, and he did a great job of herding us cats. And also, in a part of his time here, was also with the library director here. But most importantly, with the town, we would like to extend our most sincere condolences to his family for the loss of Ed. And we all miss him very much. Thank you. With that, I'd like to commence into the agenda, which starts with always the public, any public input on a non-agenda item. Does anybody here would like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Not seeing any hands, we'll move on to our second item, which is the approval of the Board of Minutes for November 19th, 2009. Do we have any comments on the wonderful board meeting minutes?
Well, good to make...
Me too. Motion?
Make a motion. We approve the minutes for November 19th, 2019.
Second?
Any discussion? Not seeing any. All's in favor. Four, zero. Oh, you weren't here. Three, zero, one, whatever that count is. And with that said, we'll go to item three, which is Select Board Reports. Alastair, would you like to start?
I would. Thank you. So, I'm gonna start off with a little video. Over the weekend, we had some flooding, and it was one of the predicted tides. It was only an 11.3-foot predicted tide, so that's well short of what normally would overtop the seawall. But, so normally, I may have not even gone down there. But I heard that there was some flooding going on, and so I did go down there and then spent a little bit of the rest of the day just documenting some of the other things that happened around town. So I thought I'd show that. Well, there is sound, but I don't know how it gets controlled around here. Bruce, actually, why isn't the sound coming out? You wanna just say something, see? Just sing. There's, it's some music. And so, these benches actually started shaking. And these kids were being really helpful. They were throwing the seaweed back in. But what you can see there, this loose wave from the dam, that was open all the way. But it's like a combination of this loose wave and the high tide just blasting like a fire. That's also part of what drives the dunes underwater sometimes. And so, when we say that the average number of times where the seawall gets overtop is four per month, that doesn't count for times like this, this storm. Here you can see a little bit of the smiling cow is underwater. Again, that dam is opened up as much as it possibly can be. So there's nothing else that we can do at that point to try to mitigate the flooding. From the norm, more rain presents in the coming years. That part of the seawall there is like leaning so much. This was interesting. Bob and I noticed as we were walking out that there's this massive amount of water that was coming out, almost like a drain underneath the top part of the Harbor Park walkway. And the bank is just starting to crumble there. Which is not something that I normally see that much. And this, you can see that a lot of people were unprepared.
Yeah.
So this is Rasenav here. And some of the people that live around there said this was definitely the worst they had ever seen it. That culvert just completely blocked up. Route 52 was really kind of amazing, if anybody, I didn't feel well enough to get out of the car, but there were all these sort of new waterfalls that were coming off of the mountain in like places that you normally don't see waterfalls. There's something, here's the Knox Mill. Again, just a kind of scary amount of water. Rasenav Bridge. And then this was a little nerve-wracking. Bob said he made some phone calls about that. Well, that was a, there's the calm. Right, yeah. And this is the tannery. But, yes, so that's that. We're working on the microsolid waste budget, which always has to be done so far ahead of time because of the fiscal year and getting it into the towns. We have a new manager. So, of course, there's always a learning curve. As everybody realizes, we have to get that budget in so early. We've been working a lot on that. We'll have a meeting tomorrow night to go over the draft budget with the board. I went to a cemetery committee meeting, which was very educational. We're entering into an agreement with the Long Funeral Home because they do some, how would I say this? It's a little bit, participating in the cemetery committee meetings is a little bit awkward sometimes because of the, just the terminology, like winter storage of bodies and things. But it's a really great group of people that have been presiding over that. We were talking about different ways of getting the Mountain View Cemetery kind of up to speed and repairing some of the stones. And their next meeting is gonna be here, and it's gonna be recorded. And I think a lot of people would actually find that interesting. But then, there's an ordinance change coming up, too, that we're gonna have to look at and trying to get, that's pretty much all ready to go. And we discussed maybe trying to get that done and looked up at a Select Board sooner rather than later because there's always stuff that comes down the pike and trying to get the easy ones done and over with. So we have time for some of the more difficult ones. Then also, Pathways Committee meeting. We discussed a summit, they're calling it, it's more of like a get-together that they're gonna have for different groups in the area at Flapred. I'm actually forgetting the date right now. Maybe Anita will text me. But that's gonna be at Flapred, and it's kind of like the different groups of people that are working on trails in the community. Then, they're also a little bit concerned trying to make sure, wondering when the opportunity for input on the wastewater treatment plant might come along. Some of those concerns were probably put in their head by me. But just trying to make sure that, you know, that's the next stage of the, I thought you guys might laugh when I said that, but just the next stage of that project and making sure that we maximize the opportunity for public access since maybe more of it than necessary is roped off, is fenced off right now. And then, last but not least, Jenna and I have been alternating attending, or we all kind of alternate attending library trustee meetings. At the last meeting that we attended, one of the things that they updated us on is their capital campaign. And we were kind of blown away that they're almost at $2 million, that $1.9 million in their campaign for the future initiative, which the public phase of that launched in April. So, they've done a really impressive job of that, and they're really trying to get to the $2 million mark by the end of the year. They, their long-term goal is to get to 2.5. But we talked about the different things that they're doing to try to get the word out. A lot of people maybe still don't know that the library really does need, you know, does depend on private fundraising. And there's sort of an idea that sometimes smaller donations are discouraged. People think, okay, well, I don't have, you know, $20,000 to give, so I'm not gonna give to the capital campaign. But emphasizing that even just in any small amount, whether it's $25, $25,000. And I think we've all, as a board, we kind of looked around and realized that we all individually have pledged to support the library, and they have 100% participation on their Board of Trustees also, which is definitely an accomplishment. So, you know, just wanting to put it out there to everybody that, you know, this is something that our community is proud of. It's a public-private partnership that we all individually, as Select Board members, have supported. And, you know, we hope that the community will join us. Diane and Nikki, they wanted me to also emphasize that if you want a brick, so the bricks are $250, you can, and yes, it definitely counts, even though you're getting something when you donate, that definitely counts as a donation to their capital campaign. You can do a payment plan. So if you wanted to do 10 payments of $25 for your brick, that would be fine. And also, not to fear that the crocuses are not being replaced. The brick garden is very much gonna be integrated with the crocuses, so people have been scared about that. But the crocuses are definitely coming back. And so, maybe take the time to check out their website and donate if you can.
Thank you, Alastair. Mrs. Jenna?
I just have a couple of really quick ones, and they're, really, actually, what I wanted to kind of quickly do was commend Public Works for the way that they handled the fault, literally, the fallout from all of this flooding. I, we, our driveway was completely washed out, tons of driveways all through, and it was amazing. I mean, by the end of the day yesterday, they had crews out, they were, so I really, I couldn't, I thought we would have to hire someone or do it ourselves with the tractor and bring Phil in. And it was just really nice to see that, just the fast reaction and the, I think that it's just sort of indicative of the way that the team here at the, at the town works. And I'm not gonna take up too much more time, but I just wanted to give a little shout-out to them because often they don't get recognition, and that was really, we were really pleasantly, so pleasantly surprised to see that. When we saw it in the morning, we were kind of stressed out, so.
That's good to hear, Jenna, that's really good.
And I saw it throughout town, and some of the driveways I had previously observed that were just toasted like ours, so.
Many, many, many.
They fixed your driveway for you?
Well, it was in the, until like the culvert. It wasn't our, yeah, it was, but it was sort of debatable.
And they re-roofed her house.
Yeah. By the way...
What I didn't know that was part of what they...
No, I'm not gonna say that.
I'll tell you about the tax thing later.
All right, cool.
I'm just kidding, everybody. Anyway, it was very nice just under the, just to see that happen quickly, and...
Thanks, Jenna. Anything else?
Nope, I think for the moment, I'm...
Mr. Ratner?
Just to clarify for our police officials here, Jenna did not take public funds to fix her driveway.
No, I was shocked when I, when Ethan came home and said your driveway, the driveway's all...
Wanted to make that clear.
It looks stupid.
I wanted to add about the Department of Public Works. The other day during a huge rainstorm, they were, they were out at Malino and Barnstown, where water was a foot, foot deep going over the road and had signs, warning signs out, road flooded signs out in the middle of the storm. And then, and have cleaned it up since then, so they've done a terrific job about that. In the last week or so, last couple weeks since, or last month since the last meeting, because we missed the last one. I've been to a Planning Board meeting. Everything's progressing there. It's, it's a great board we have right now. They're doing a lot of good work. Downtown Design Team has been working on, when Maine DOT does downtown roadwork, they're gonna work the, what's it called, the walkway? Right next to Sea Dog Harbor Walkway. They're working on reworking that, so it'll be a much nicer, much clearer walkway down to the harbor so people aren't walking on the street. They've been working really hard on that. They're also working on a mural, designing a mural for the side of the building where the old theater was, where the pizza place is now. Better look onto the mechanic parking lot, and there's been a lot of work on that. Opera House Committee had a meeting this week. Things are going great there. I don't know if a lot of people, a lot of people went to the Lunessa Show this weekend. Had just exceptional shows lately, and the plan already for 2020 is really strong with the Blue Cafe, Maine-made music, and, and the shows, plus some free movies. It's been a really nice program for the last year and will continue to do so. Last night, I was at the Energy Meeting, Committee Meeting, a lot of discussion there about what's going on. It's something I'm very interested in. You know, it's not just us, it's the whole world is looking at what's going on with the climate, with changes. One of the things, one of the reasons I think we're seeing more flooding right now, besides sea level rise, severity of storms, is for the last year, I've noticed that we've had a trend to have cold come in from the north and freeze everything, and then warm storms, rainstorms come in from the south, which normally would have been snow. And when that happens, the ground is frozen and can't absorb the water that's being dumped by these rainstorms. So it's causing more flooding than I think we've seen recently. And the projections are that will continue for the winter. So, I've noticed the snow bowl, been working really hard to take advantage of cold days to do snowmaking so they can hopefully open for the Christmas season. And one of the things you'll notice, you might think that, well, with all this rain, all the snowmaking is going away. But what they do is they do the snowmaking, and they put it into great big huge piles, which are not affected so much by rain. Flog is actually more detrimental to the, to the snow than the rain is. And then they can redistribute those piles as it gets colder. So they've survived the rainstorm quite well. There's quite a bit of snow in this, a snow bowl. So, something to look forward to very soon. But I did want to talk about energy use for the town. We're gonna be talking about it. We're gonna be having, hopefully, some workshops, making some decisions because it is important what we do. There's a lot of discussion about solar RECs right now, which are renewable energy certificates, where you can buy, instead of buying just regular energy from CMP or somebody, you can contact somebody that you will buy, you're buying renewable energy, which is supposed to come from a wind farm or a solar farm or something like that. And a lot of people use that as an excuse to say, well, it's okay, I'm buying renewable energy, so it's okay for me to use my private jet, so on and so forth. There's a lot of trading going on with that. The most effective way and the best way to use, you know, renewable energy is to own it and use it. And for myself on the board, looking forward to these next meetings we have coming up, where we're talking about more solar energy usage, more solar farm for the town so that we can perhaps own our own energy, use it, not only to cut back on the municipal use of energy. You know, the snow bowl is the second biggest, is the biggest energy user in the town, and to make that all renewable would be a terrific thing. Not using just RECs, which I think we already use as well, but to have the own, but also to maybe, once we've taken care of the municipal needs, try to find a way to supply renewable energy to town, town residents as well. So something I'm very interested in, something we're looking forward to. And with that, I'll turn it over to Bob.
Thank you, Mark. And again, I was real mis-upfront. I should have recognized also we, the passing of Adele Hopkins, who is the most recent recipient of the Boston Kane. I believe she was 101. Is that correct? God bless her. But I wanted to mention that. I'm sorry, I forgot that up front. In terms of, yeah, segue to what you, I'm sorry, Mark.
Sorry, one more thing I forgot. As a member of the Globe, we were the first community in Maine to join the Global Covenant of Mayors, and now we're joined by other towns in Maine. And the Watershed School, their student class at the second half of the year has been compiling information, I found out last night, that they're not gonna use just a partial part of the year next year. They're gonna use the whole class from January on to the end of the year to work on the Global Covenant of Mayors. So they're gonna put more work into it for the town. So thank you to Watershed for the work they do for us.
Thank you very much, Mark. In terms of that, you're right. As you know, we've been doing a lot of homework and discussed today, we talked today with Maine Power Options, which is a very interesting new development of our, offshoot of our initiatives on, on energy. And we got a lot of stuff to discuss, and we'll start it on January 7th on the agenda and decide how we go from there in terms of decision-making, et cetera. But we do need to get there. We, the last few months, we've done a lot, a lot of homework and a lot, a lot of work, thanks to Audrey, Jeremy, and staff, too, for all the help. What was I gonna mention? One of the things, and I forgot it already. Wasn't that important, obviously. But with that, we'll move on to...
Oh, I've got some updates.
I was gonna say, Audrey, did you want to also mention the latest policy on parking ban? I'll wait till next time.
Well, we talked about waiting until the 7th.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. I wanted to make sure we get that out there.
Yeah.
That's cool.
All right, so I'll, I'll just go through, through these quickly. So, we did training on the content management system for the new website. So it was myself, Janice, Esensi, and Caitlin Thompson. Because Janice and I will be administrators, Caitlin will be an editor. So we've, before the site goes live, we've got some, you know, cleanup work to do and some, you know, moving around of different, you know, information and updating content. So we're estimating that it's gonna take four to five weeks before we're ready to go live. But that's good. We have a, we have a date, finally, for everyone. In regards to EMS, myself and Chris Farley participated in a county-wide meeting where EMS was discussed. No surprises to anyone, every single EMS service in the county is having the same challenges in regards to staffing and revenue from Medicare and insurance reimbursements that aren't really covering the cost of the service. And, you know, that leaves municipalities with a responsibility of covering the difference. One of the biggest things that the directors are starting to see is the fact that a lot of the staff are shared amongst the services. It's, and they're not actually officially shared, it's just a bunch of per diem people. It's a small pool in Knox County, so it's very common for somebody to work for a union ambulance on a per diem basis and also be employed by Northeast or, you know, Thomiston, South Thomiston, St. George. So there was an acknowledgement that since they all share the same staff, they need to work together more closely in order to improve coverage across the entire county because what happens in one part of the county affects everybody else in terms of coverage. So I think there was some good acknowledgement that, you know, they'd like to work together more closely, and that's gonna be really important moving forward, and that there are other things that we can do to sort of go above and beyond just coordination, to actually trying to look forward a little bit and how we can set this up so that it's more effective and efficient. And that'll, that'll really help sort of inform some of the discussions that we're having with our partnering neighboring communities about EMS service. In regards to the project on McGunta Cook River with the dams, all the way from Montgomery Dam up to McGunta Cook Lake and the dams in between, we've engaged Erin Spencer Mullen. She's a local marine biologist with experience in program coordination, project management, and community engagement, particularly around environmental projects. And she's going to help with some of the public education outreach, communication. And she could play a larger role in these projects moving forward. But at this stage, we're not really certain what Erin is going to want to do in terms of her level of involvement.
She also grew up here, which is just an interesting point, which is nice.
Which is great, yeah. She's got a really good understanding of the community and stakeholders and...
Great.
Really neat.
And, and helping us interpret data. And she also has set up water quality monitoring programs, which is, you know, like the harbor and water testing there. And she knows how to train volunteers to continue some of this water testing. And hopefully, she, she hasn't committed to necessarily doing any of those things yet, but since we've talked a little bit as a, as a Select Board about the possibility of needing some kind of part-time sustainability coordinator or somebody to help with some of our Global Covenant of Mayors contribution, she might be able to help us sort of parse out what we, what we need in terms of extra support there, too.
Great.
Yeah, we're very fortunate to have someone with her skills to be helping us on these sorts of projects. So in terms of energy efficiency in regard, in relation to town buildings, Dave Morrison, Dave St. Laurent, and Bob was kind enough to lend his expertise. We met with a couple of companies to discuss energy efficiency audits and performance contracts to get a better understanding of things that we could do to assess our energy use across the buildings and figure out ways to create savings and improve performance in regards to, you know, energy of the, consumption of the buildings. And it looks like for, for our purposes, a performance contract is going to be the best approach because it really obligates the company that we're working with to deliver on the savings that they're promising as a result of some of the projects that they recommend for us going forward. So it's really like the LED streetlight conversion project, where at the end of that project, it's going to be cost-neutral, well, it's gonna give, it's gonna produce savings, and to get to that point, it's cost-neutral when you're looking at the financing of the project. So that's kind of how performance contracting works for the entire building. So if they're telling us to replace our steam syst, you know, our boiler and steam heat with whatever it is they're telling us, they need to make sure that it is gonna produce the savings that they've projected. They're obligated by law to do that. So it's really very, it's zero financial risk for the town. It could result in cost savings at a minimum. So I think that, you know, we're gonna do a lot more work to explain exactly what that's gonna look like. At this stage, we're looking at this building as well as the public safety building because of the HVAC improvements we were talking about, trying to wrap that in to this as well so that we know any improvements that are gonna be done there, we're assessing the best possible way to do that so there's actual cost savings as a result. We started the FY '21 budget process. I won't get into that any more than the fact that we've started. And one of the things that we really want to ask the Select Board about doing, and we'll form up this idea a little bit more, I'm just kind of throwing it out there during the report section, is that we've kind of gotten some preliminary estimates for engineering to do some major road improvements, one being Mechanic Street. And if you just look at sort of the, you know, the engineering costs associated with doing the subsurface infrastructure, changing the geometry of the road to, yeah, drainage to better accommodate...
On Mechanic Street?
You live on it.
I know.
There's, there's some drainage improvements that, stormwater, you know, improvements that need to be made. And it's, you know, do you want, a question of, does the community want bike lanes on Mechanic Street? And if we're gonna do that...
I just want the telephone poles out of the sidewalk.
Stuff like that.
One small step for mankind.
Is really Mechanic Street thought to be one of the worst?
Is it?
Well, in terms of the... In terms of the drainage, I mean, you can tell by the condition of the road.
The water comes right into my yard, but Rick says that to my health.
So what you're really, what you're really saying, Audrey, is to do spend, proposal to spend some engineering on various projects? So you have the information ready to go when you have the budget to do it?
Well, what I'm saying is we would like to do a straw poll during the, you know, sorry, I'm losing my words. A straw poll prior to town meeting, you know, like placed on the ballot to get an idea of, you know, the direction it looks like the residents would like to go in or the, you know, the voting public would like to go in. Because we don't want to spend close to $100,000 worth of engineering if it's going to be a project that, at the end of the day, people are not gonna support during the budget process. If we're looking at like $1.3 million worth of upgrades.
So you want to do this for just, for many roads, or this is all about Mechanic Street?
There's, there's a number of different roads, but that's kind of the one that comes to mind that would be kind of front of mind for most people as well.
Straw poll votes in June?
Yes.
Or at a different time?
Yeah, it would be in June.
Interesting. That's the way most people...
We should, we should do, or we could just have that be a topic of discussion at town meeting.
Well, it would be as well, because, you know, we would also kind of budget for that improvement in the, in the regular budget process. But we would also like to find out, you know, on, because oftentimes, people, if it's a multi-year... because oftentimes, people, if it's a multi-year thing, like you're budgeting one year for the engineering to do a project, and the next year for the actual capital, you know, improvement side of it and the financing of the project, you know, there can be a disconnect between what people are paying attention to, so I think it would be good to get, you know, the straw poll, are people going to support, you know, a $1.3 million, or like maybe a $2 million road bond to do major improvements to roads that incorporates, you know, better pedestrian connectivity and better amenities for cyclists--
Yep.
--on top of the drainage work. Like, so are you willing to support that? And then during the actual town meeting budget process, you'll have a chance to talk about it, because we're going to be proposing funds for the engineering work to do that.
Whenever there's a backlog, and every town, city in the country has its infrastructure problems and projects, they usually take that approach to prioritize, otherwise get it done, and then, because you can't do it all in one year.
Right.
So, that's, we'll talk about it.
So, anyway, we can, we'll flesh out the details, I'm just kind of throwing this out now as something that we'd like you to consider.
Perfect.
And maybe we can, you could consider just the town meeting format where people can actually exchange ideas, might be a better format for that, because rather than a straw poll of the uninformed, but, because otherwise we have to get it all, all the information out to people, and then tell them to do the straw poll, and then hope that they read it, and--
Right. Anything else, Audrey?
Those are my updates.
Going on to the next agenda item, Ken, I'm going to have to modify the consent agenda a little bit, and I'll lead you through it because of the stack-up of stuff that we've been missed last time and other reasons, but first of all and foremost, Item C, approval of Camden Opera House will be moved to an agenda item. And then we will address two items under the consent agenda, and the first one was a little modified, and I'll read what it is. It's the appointment of committee members for the following. For the Energy Committee, we have Ms. Jenkins. For the--
Patsy Harman.
Well, I'm just trying to--
The public that's following along.
Well, you fill in the first name, pick out the last names. For the Energy Committee, I said Ms. Jenkins. For Parks and Rec, Mr. Young.
Stewart.
Stewart, thank you. For Opera House would be Ms. Gross, Marie.
Margie.
Margie, I was going to say Marie, I knew it was an M. And lastly, for, no, not lastly, for the Charter Commission, Mr. Burleson.
Steve.
Very good.
Or Stephen, I don't know.
Man, drumroll please.
And for CDAC, Ms. Maria Libby. And that would be the list on the first consent agenda item, and the second consent agenda item, as listed, is the approval of employee discount for Snowball passes. Do I have any objections to those two consent agenda items?
No.
Hearing none, they are hereby adopted. And we will move to the discussion on the new agenda item, which is the approval of the Camden Opera House third-floor remodeling project, which we have some quotes for, I believe, in our package, I don't believe, I know we have in our package.
It's, the bids are, for FI builders and architects, bid price is $33,938 with an alternate of $300, and Penobscop Company bid is $39,425.73.
One of the reasons why we didn't, kept it up, took it off the consent agenda is because we need to discuss how it's being funded, so do you want--
Yes. So, I'm proposing that, I think this is, it's good, I talked about the performance contract, because this will kind of make a little more sense now. So, we'd originally budgeted $20,000 for this project, but I think everybody's aware of the, you know, increase in construction costs and availability of contractors. So, bids came in higher than we'd estimated, and we are not going to be spending $35,000 that was budgeted on the HVAC repairs for the public safety building, because it's going to be wrapped into the performance contract that we're looking at moving forward with for this building and public safety.
Can I--
So, it would be that difference would be shifted from that line.
Can I ask another quick question? Just, we have, bids were opened on May 8th. Do we know that they're holding their prices?
No, they were not open on May 8th, they were opened on--
It says Friday, May--
It does say Friday, May 8th.
It was--
Sorry.
Yeah, that's incorrect, it was, yeah, it was opened--
May, December.
No.
Last week or the week before.
Last week, it was December.
Okay.
Yeah, it must have been December 8th.
Good clarification.
Yeah, yes.
Can we go over the scope of work here? Because, I mean--
Actually, Mr. Fassold is here.
Chris?
Yes.
Please, please come up, Chris, I didn't see you back there.
So, Chris helped prepare all the bid documents that went out, so he can talk about the scope.
I'm Chris Fassold, I'm the, I live in Camden, and I'm the architect for the bathroom. But Ken Gross and Eileen sent over a note today, and this is just talking to what you were talking about earlier, but in 1910, the Camden Herald, in September in 1910, the Camden locals said, "The work re tubing the boiler in the Opera House was completed last Saturday, and there is now heat in the building." It never ends.
A long legacy.
Everything that is old is new again.
So, there is our design, is there? Are there any questions?
No, I just think, I think it was what causes the flip of the coin, yeah, one, we understand the construction industry, and I think we're doing not a great job of putting enough contingency on projects going forward. This is across the board, by the way, this just isn't here, but when you're that much over budget, that needs, a red flag needs to go up, I think. A little John Disnov taking it out of the 35K, because we haven't moved very far forward with the public safety building in terms of the performance contracting, is that being an absolute? I agree with you, I think there's a 90% chance it's going to be that, plus some solar and other things in the building, but do we have any other sources for the money than that?
Yes, you could take it out of select board contingency.
And that is how much now, do you know?
It's over $100,000.
But getting back to maybe the point of, what are we going to get for $35,000?
Okay.
I mean, I know that if there was going to be a $35,000 upgrade to a bathroom at the Snowball, it would be, it would receive like the utmost level of scrutiny and possible pushback and all, I just--
I think that's a really good question.
Can we just understand a little bit what--
The scope?
Yes, the scope, thank you.
Chris, can you describe the scope of work that we're doing here on the third floor?
Yes.
I know we don't have a drawing here, but could you just describe it, please?
Oh, okay, we're taking out the bathroom that's there, that's wholly unusable, and we're going to make it accessible, and also do all the proper sprinklers and electronics and security and things like that that has to be moved. That was in the early budgeting, we didn't include that. And we're also, and then we're making the room larger for the bathroom, but making the, what used to be the office for the Opera House smaller, but then putting a sink and a janitor closet in there, a janitor sink and a counter, the, people that come and do catering and that, they need a sink. And right now, the janitor, if you ever watched him, he does the floors with his mop, and he uses that little tiny 12-inch square sink in the bathroom to do his janitorial work with and all that. So, that's what that is. And then we're upgrading the lights and all of the electric and things like that through the painting, everything.
Interesting, as a comment, one of the things going forward on estimates and projects, we need to be thinking about putting like 50% on, and not kidding ourselves, because I don't know where the estimate came from, but I know if it came from a bunch of engineers and I am one, they ain't good. And especially in this given, Mark, we've been stumbled over this with the parking lot at Mechanic Street and other projects, and it's constant. So, you know, when you get hit in the head once, the second time, we should know better.
Also, another problem is, we're budgeting often two years in advance of when a project is actually done.
Well, and I think that should be part of the, as projects go forward, on anything you're contemplating, we shouldn't let the budget of a year ago hell hold for today. The escalation, it's not just escalation, it's the problem with the construction industry.
I can add, this has been in the works for two years, so that original budget is two years old.
Yep.
And we've been working on this, and it was okay for the last, at the last budget committee, which is almost a year old now, so.
Yeah, and I don't want to, you know, magnify $15,000 worth, I mean, at the end of the day, we're lucky to have Camden as strong as it is, but we'll only stay strong if we get smarter.
Have you ever used the bathrooms at Lake Beach, or--
Yes.
Even Public Landing, tried to change a diaper in the public bathrooms down there?
Yes.
I just, you know, when you look at what that amount of money can get and who in town is going to benefit it. I know I promised I wasn't going to talk about the third-floor bathroom anymore, and just, I was at $20,000, and now it's at 35.
33.
Making me 34.
It's only $35,000.
I will just defer to others on this.
We are doing a little bit to retain the original part of the bathroom, is that right now, the entry into the, that you go, the doorway--
Yeah.
--and the wall--
Right.
We're going to pull that off, the door's only two feet, four inches wide--
Right.
--and move it over and use that in front of the ductwork that goes up there and make a little closet out of it, so we're preserving one door and adding a little color to the place.
Compliant bathroom?
Excuse me?
Is it compliant?
Oh, everywhere, yes.
Just one stall, one person can use it at a time, or?
A universal, non-gender-specific bathroom.
It's still one at a time.
For handicap access as well, which is important, because otherwise--
I suppose this wasn't my question.
She's just asking if it's a one holder or not.
It's one.
It's a, it's a--
Like, some of them are handicap accessible, and two people can use it at once.
That's correct.
It's a stander and a sitter.
Yeah, exactly.
And a sink, and a baby-changing table.
Okay, good.
And there's a--
Open floor plan though.
--five-foot circle in the middle where a wheelchair can come in.
I'm surprised we only got two bids for this project, actually. I'm wondering, and I'll just, I know that FI is doing the Rockport Public Library, they are historically, from what I understand, a residential builder, you feel comfortable with them?
They do more than--
They do beautiful residential work.
--more than residential stuff, and I feel comfortable with them.
Okay.
Fine, and--
And you're working as an architect.
--do it on time, and that was a bigger consideration.
Yeah.
Especially for Dave and the Opera House, it was the--
And as an architect.
--getting it done by the 20th of January.
Okay.
One of the reasons they want it done is they want it done for Camden conferences, so that's one of the people they're trying to get it all finished for.
We've been working on a bathroom on the third floor since 2004, getting a decent bathroom on the--
Sounds like 15 years in our life. Like I said, I'm just uncomfortable with, two things, one is the overruns, we've got to be smarter going forward collectively, that's what's included.
I'd say, you know, any budget, it's a best guess in a point of time, and one of the things that we have to do is decide, do we move forward with projects like this that are more than we budgeted, and if so, what are we sacrificing to do that? And I guess that's, you know, we're always doing things like that, managing finances.
I agree, I'm just suggesting, as we look at anything going forward, including the plans for infrastructure and roads and stuff, we're going to have to, or wastewater treatment plants, whatever it is, we're going to have to put larger contingencies on, and we should be really conservative about that, so we don't get as big a surprise, because this is a percentage-wise, and, yeah, you know, and small projects are tough these days, I get that, because all you have to do is sneeze and it costs $10,000. But I think that's one, and two, I just, my perspective, I think we should find a bucket that's not the public service building, that's all.
Question, if we take the money out of the, the additional money out of the select board contingency fund, and we end up not using the money that's marked for the public safety building, can we replenish that money into the--
No, but you're, I mean--
It all nets out, it all nets out.
You're fine, your contingency is, actually, you'll be just fine.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion, we accept FI builders, who Dave Morrison recommended as well, at $33,938 with a $300 addition for Design Alternate 1, whatever that means, I'm not quite sure about that, and use the money from the select board contingency fund to make up the difference from the $20,000 that was already budgeted.
Discussion.
We have 10 bricks falling out of the building.
Is what?
It just kills me, because we haven't, can't even fix the bricks that are falling out of the building and all these things that seem really critical, but other people have studied this more than I do, so I will defer to experts.
All those in favor? 40, sorry, starting the mic. Okay, thank you, Chris, thank you very much.
Do we need, in favor of approving the FI bid for, or that's all?
I said that.
He did, he did say that. Including the alternate one, okay.
I have a case of misfires.
Moving on to a lot more fun topic, we're going to, we have the honor to do a badge pinning tonight of a new police officer, Jonathan Morgan, chief.
Jonathan, come on up. Jonathan Morgan has joined the police department several months ago, we're finally getting him here to do his official badge pinning tonight. A little about John, John was raised in San Jacinto, California. After graduating in 1999, he joined the United States Navy and completed eight overseas deployments--
Wow.
--during his 20 years with the Navy. John retired in March of 2019 as a chief petty officer with the Navy, and he and his wife and two sons moved to Appleton. His wife Laurel and son Tristan will pin his badge on him tonight.
Hi.
Gets to do the honor. The pin is in the back, so be careful, okay? It's not official till it's on there. Let's pull that right out. And it's official now, congratulations, John, welcome to the--
Thank you very much for letting me join up. Thank you.
Something, can he--
Who's he?
Just--
And I'd like to ask a question. About Jonathan Morgan.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks for coming.
Congratulations, nice to meet you. Congratulations, John.
I'm just sort of curious, Camden is as far away from San Jacinto, California as you can get, and having spent 35 years in Los Angeles, I sort of did the same thing, so I'm just sort of curious, what brought you here?
Well, I would say after 20 years of living in Navy towns, which are generally very overpopulated and lots of traffic and not the best crime stats, we were definitely looking for somewhere quiet, somewhere safe, somewhere where retirement actually looked like retirement, so. Originally, we were actually looking at Montana and Wyoming, but when we were looking at houses, it was a stark absence of trees in a lot of the properties, and eventually, somehow, we got the idea for Maine, we looked around at properties, we decided to take a road trip up here while I was still active duty, and settled on a place, so we came up here as soon as I could retire.
This is great.
Are you living in Camden?
I live in Appleton.
Okay. You're going to Appleton School?
It's a great school.
That's where I went to school from first grade to eighth grade, and I loved it, so.
So, you can be a select board member when you grow up.
Much better than going to, well, I don't, I like Camden.
Don't do it.
Jonathan is a really, do you like it?
Did you go to that school less than 20 years ago?
Ooh, let me think.
Right on the cusp.
Quick, I wasn't that great at math. I'm 35.
So, 20 years ago was 15.
No.
By like a hair, she was--
She was almost there.
Maybe there are a couple of people there that would remember me, I'm not sure.
She did stay back a few years, so if you may--
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Well, welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
So, just so I can be clear, I have a John of Thanh that works in Rockport, I have a John of Thon that works in Camden, so I have Thanh and Thon.
I also have two butlers in Camden.
I have two butlers in Camden, yeah, it's usually--
Do we have a typo here, then?
Yes, you do, but it's okay, it's a common mistake, I'm sure he's--
Oh, you know my passport.
I'm going to let them fight out, fight it out between them, who's got the right spelling, but that's okay.
What kind of shift will you be doing to start, or since you've been on the--
He's volunteered to work the midnight shift.
Okay, okay.
A lot of volunteers, but it's--
If I remember, one of your other officers--
That's the exciting time, I hear.
One of your other officers is here and liked that shift a lot because there's more going on, so a good time to work. One of your other officers is here and liked that shift a lot because there's more going on, so a good time to work.
Yeah, you get to be out there all by yourself. It's pretty nice. If I could, for just a sec, throw a plug in there. Camden and Rockport Police Department are going to team up with Hanford this weekend to fill the cruiser. If you buy a ten-dollar food bowl from Hanford, we'll place it in the cruiser and we will transport everyone that has bought up to the food pantry on Saturday afternoon. And that's from ten till two.
At Hanford?
Good thing you guys have those SUVs.
Hanford and Camden. Bob Jocelyn asked me if it was something we thought we could do, and I think it's a great project.
That's great.
So come on out and buy your.
Can we, can we fill the cruisers as many times as we want?
If you keep buying, we'll keep driving. How's that?
That's why I wanted to hear.
I'm told that the, the food pantry will have somebody that's there. And when Camden has filled theirs, they take whatever is left over and they divide that out amongst other food pantries in the area. So very great cause and we're glad to be working with them. Get out there and.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jonathan Thon. On to the next item of the agenda, which is the approval of Select Board meeting schedule for 2020, which we have in our, in our packet. Are there any?
Okay, hold on.
By what?
Let me, um.
Are you going to put it back in there?
Let me fix the lighting here.
Okay.
Oh, wow. Did it go all the way?
Yeah.
On its own?
I guess so.
Wow.
Well, it just, it just clicked in.
It just clicked in?
The, the schedule, I just, the, the schedule we have on our computer screens. While we're fixing the, the visual, did anybody, how many specific dates of interest?
The one suggestion we had had, the last time we discussed this
Yep.
was election day is Tuesday, the third. We talked about moving our.
On June, in June?
November.
I'm sorry.
To November fourth, so that.
November third?
We take, we take, so we're on the fourth, Wednesday, the fourth, and then Tuesday, the seventeenth. And that way, we're not meeting the week of Thanksgiving, when a lot of people like to be out of town. You know, the, the other comments I make, we will be meeting the week of, looks like spring break and winter break for the schools, but.
Is that February?
But that's, that's the way it works. But I think that moving November, like we did this past year.
I think that's good.
Does that, that work for, I think it worked, I think it worked for Taylor. We did mention it.
And I think it sends a good message, particularly where this is a presidential election and people are going to be.
Yeah, that's a good point. Excellent point. So the only change I'm hearing then is to change the November schedule to Wednesday, November fourth for the first meeting and Tuesday, November seventeenth, for the second meeting. It also has the advantage, by the way, while you're thinking, that the twenty-fourth of November, as shown, and December first are one week apart. So it makes a lot of sense.
It's just spacing in between the meetings.
Yeah.
Sorry, that was Tuesday, November seventeenth.
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, the, the, um, only other thing that's kind of near and dear to my heart is trying to find a way that more people can participate in town meeting. With the charter change, we have the discretion to not have it on the first Wednesday after the second Tuesday. A lot of that has to do, for me in the past and for, I think, some other parents, it's been oftentimes the last week of school and very often a direct conflict with the school event or a school board meeting. I did communicate with both Maria Libby and Matt Daly to get their insights. Matt Daly provided some, some really useful comments, struggling with some of the same issues over there with public engagement. Fortunately, this year, there is currently no direct conflict between the school's, like, last school board meeting and award ceremony and all that, so June tenth will be okay in that way. Matt recommended, and this is something I've heard from others too, that we would not move it to Saturday because it's such a nice time of year and people don't really necessarily want to give up Saturdays sometimes. It does work well in other towns, but that one thing we might look at doing is just moving it earlier so that people like to, you know, five or five-thirty and combining it with some of, you know, some kind of dinner offering or, you know, something like that. But when people go home and then they have to come back, it's harder for them. When things start at seven, it's harder for families, for sure. And so I was thinking that it doesn't, it doesn't specify a time on here but that we could look into ways, maybe, maybe starting it earlier, leaving it.
What about six o'clock? Because then you're, a lot of people that work nine to five would have a hard time making five or five-thirty, six.
Well, maybe we can save that discussion for another day, but we can all kind of, maybe we can reach out and chat with community members and get some ideas. Matt said that, you know, the, their very best turnouts for school board meetings are when they do awards and offer cake. So just in line of like trying to make it a little bit more fun for people, what if we did some kind of dinner on the Villa, you know, obviously optional. Dinner on the Village Green or on the third floor ahead of time to, to make people feel just a little bit more comfortable coming and being involved in the town. They want to stay, they can. If they don't, they don't have to, but.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. Anyway, if we can, so, so we don't need to think about a radical change to Saturday, but maybe if everybody could keep in mind an earlier time, which doesn't need to be decided today.
On the same date.
On the same day, just, you know, see how it goes. See if we can improve things a little bit.
All right. Something we can certainly discuss as we go forward for the annual town meeting on June tenth, right?
Yes.
Maybe, maybe look at the entertainment for town people and an earlier time. I'll make a motion that we accept the Select Board schedule with the one change. Select Board meeting Wednesday, November fourth, after the presidential election on Tuesday, the third, and the second Select Board meeting that month on Tuesday, the seventeenth.
Second.
One point of discussion is that we're, I just want to note that we're moving the schedule for the November election, but not the June election, which will be both municipal election and a primary.
But would that be on the second?
The election?
When is the election?
It's supposed to be June ninth.
Municipal's June ninth, yeah.
Oh, then we, we should probably do it on the tenth.
I just wonder if being consistent.
The primary is going to be in March.
Yeah, the primaries are in March.
The municipal election's the ninth, right? The primaries are in March. So there, but if we want to move it.
We're going to have a Select Board meeting.
What is, do we know which date?
Nobody cares what municipal elections are. We all know that.
You're up for reelection.
All right.
Someone better care.
And Bob too.
I know.
I am?
You better.
Oh, yeah, whatever.
It's been three years.
Are, are the, is the election on the ninth this year? Not the second?
I, I.
Second Tuesday?
It's the ninth. It's not, it's highlighted, in the highlighted text.
I suggest we do is leave it at the ninth and announce, we talk to Taylor and then we can decide, we can change that one day later because he's not here. And I know he verified that all of these dates, including the November changes, were good with his schedule. I, it's up to you guys, but I.
Yeah, oh, this is tough. Wow.
I mean, I, I just don't see the election on June ninth being anywhere near the magnitude of November tenth, in my perspective.
There is a presidential primary in March. Is that on the third or is that on the tenth? Do we know?
March. Yeah, I don't know when that is, to tell you the truth.
Because I would suggest we move.
We could do it on a Wednes, no.
My only thing is not to split hairs, but is to be consistent. If we're trying to use our democratic process to not compete with an existing.
Discriminate against our own democratic process rather than.
Discriminate, that's a cruel word. All right.
Yeah, like democracy matters at the federal level, but not really at the.
The alternative is to make it June tenth and keep your fingers crossed.
No, we can't.
We're having a pollock and cake.
We'll do both the same night. What, what are you proposing for June?
On the second.
Oh.
I mean, instead of.
At the eighth.
You want to move to the, you want to move to the second and sixteenth instead of the tenth?
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's, I guess, where I'm going since June. Technically, the first Tuesday of June is the second.
We could try like a Friday.
I don't really understand the whole thing.
You can leave it, you can do June second, June twenty-third. It's another alternative. But you don't have to do the sixteenth and the second because we have a couple of weeks between that and the next meeting too. So whatever works best.
Especially since the twenty-third is listed on this calendar as the tenth.
I was going to say anything.
I was like, is something wrong?
That is really confusing. That's my birthday.
It's because we're having two town meetings. Anyway, what do you propose? I can, I can do all.
I didn't even notice.
I just did and I thought.
I'm not having a birthday this year.
Oh, yeah, it's your birthday.
So the other change would be Tuesday, June second. And leave it on June twenty-third.
And then I would suggest.
Why not the sixteenth? Why not just go with the second and the sixteen?
The sixteenth and the second.
Okay, okay.
And then in March, the, the, the first main primaries, instead of caucuses, will be on the third. So I would suggest moving to the fourth.
Oh, my gosh. We didn't fix that one?
Nope.
That's going to be a big one.
That's, I think, Mark, I agree with Mark.
Let's go for the, let's try a Wednesday.
Fourth?
I said the fourth.
Oh.
Make a motion.
I make a motion that for the Select Board scheduled meetings in January, February, stay as they're scheduled. In March, we move the meeting on Tuesday, the third, to Wednesday, March fourth, to, so we will not be going against the, the presidential primaries. In June, we move from the ninth and twenty-third to the second and sixteenth, so we avoid our municipal election. And in November, we move to the fourth and the seventeenth to avoid the presidential election and the week of Thanksgiving.
Second, very well stated.
Yes, discussion. All in favor? Four, zero, Camden. Thank you very much. Onward to a consideration of the 2020 commercial fishermen's float permits for Arthur Andrews, Bernie Appleton, Ken Bradstreet, Mark Bradstreet, Dave Emery, David Emery, Wilbur McCall, Adam Scott, Bradford Scott, Art Tibbetts, and Tobias Winkelhofer. There knows Toby.
How many is that total?
I'd count ten, but I thought we had eleven applications.
How did we end up with so many? I could have sworn we didn't have that many.
Mr. Habamasta.
Good evening. Yeah, we have the same usual suspects except for a one, Wilbur McCall, who is new. Uh, his, he was fishing here all summer in and around Camden. He doesn't actually fish for lobsters. He fishes for everything else, pogue, bait, scallops. He wants to actually start buying and selling lobster because he's got a license for that. So he would ask, he knows all the fishermen and they're going to actually sell their catch to him. And then he's going to bring it to market.
A lobster broker?
Oh.
Seems like it was a wild information.
Is, is this ten list correct? The list of ten here, correct?
Yeah.
I counted eleven in the packet. Sorry?
Barney's on there, yeah.
Yeah, Barney's there. I, I tried twice to figure it out, but I, I've got, I've got. Uh, Wilbur, Wilbur McCall's on the, on the list.
I, I love your comments, Steve, for all of them.
Yeah, I know.
It's all like, works well with the others.
Were you an elementary school teacher?
I know, I like.
It's like, what should we be watching out for? Is that?
I know what it is.
Use the value, I know.
I think I found it. There's a name that I wrote from a list. It's Mr. Talbot. Mr. Talbot?
No problems.
The drill.
Mr. Talbot?
Yeah.
He's not, he's not on, on this list. I don't see him on this list, but he's in the packet.
I see his license, yeah.
He's in the packet, but he's not on the list on the agenda. Is Mr. Talbot applied also?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So we need, we need to add to that list, Mr., I forget his first name, it's B. Talbot.
Gary, Gary.
Gary Talbot.
Gary Talbot. I knew there was one missing. Okay, anyway, to, back to the question about the number. Is this any different than last year, other than the one you just mentioned?
No, no, it's all the same besides that.
Is there room? So there, we have ten fishing boats that are, are eleven.
Eleven.
We've had ten, we're going to have eleven that are. Are they all?
Yeah, this hasn't been an issue because a lot of them only part-time fish. So they're rarely at the, actually rarely using the, the actual dock. Barney comes in once in a blue moon.
His boat's in.
What are they doing when they're not in? Are they fishing?
They have other marine jobs. They take care of islands, the caretakers, stuff like that.
But I was, I was trying to think of a way to ask this. Um, is there any kind of, I mean, obviously, this is heavily discounted. Um, the, the rates compared to like finger floats or, um, for the average non-fisherman. Are there any abuse of that, like people saying that they're fishing and they're really not?
Uh, no, the only thing that has been brought up is that they are getting a fisherman's parking.
Yeah.
So that might be something we might, might want to look at in the future is like, okay, we're getting, we're, we're, these people are, are saying they're, they're bringing, they want to use the, the infrastructure for what we, I think what the town wants it for, which is commercial fishing.
Yep.
And they're not really bringing commercial catch into the dock.
Right, that's what I was kind of wondering because I spend a lot of time just sitting down there. I don't see as much.
I mean, do we want to actually say, well, how much did you bring in? I mean, because they're not bringing, you know, they're, they're using it, but some are using it much, much more than others.
Mm-hmm. And their, and their package prices float in parking.
Yeah.
They're parking more than they're fishing?
Well, the thing is, is that they're not going to park there and, and, and put, I've never seen someone like, like Gary Talbot rarely uses. He doesn't park his car there and use it as a parking spot. He's never there. So here he's paying them, he's paying that fee because he thinks he might need it. But there's no impact because he's, his car's not there and he doesn't rarely use the dock, so.
Does he have a parking permit for that?
He gets one, but I never see his car there, so, yes.
Just want to be clear on who gets what, that's all.
How, how often are those spaces used?
Well.
As they're saved specifically for fishermen during that time, are they actively used on a regular basis or?
They're actively used for the, for the fishermen that are actively in use. The ones that aren't there, they're not there, so.
But how, how much of the, the day, I mean, are we using the town parking facilities?
There's definitely times a day when there's empty fisherman spots. So that's another thing.
It seems like they never go out and sit there.
Do we need all the space reserved for them that they have reserved right now?
I would, I would say you could probably get away with taking a couple away. I don't think they would, but.
But we do want that, I mean, it's, we want to have that space available for, we don't want to say, oh, well, it was a little slow, so we gave that away to more.
Yeah, what we could do is we could actually try on a trial period, like next, next season, we could take two away and see if there's an issue. You know.
Are you giving that eleven and only allowing eight or something like that?
Yeah. And then if all of a sudden there's an issue, we could just get highway. Well, no issue because I'd, I'd have dead fish in my car.
Well, and you.
GMG.
Yeah. Hope they get it mixed up with yours.
Steve, you'd also have.
There's no way of that, is there?
You'd also have to have the permits if you go that route in, in your, in your shed and your harbor master office. Otherwise, you won't, they won't be able to hand them to each other. Are, are the permits literally given to the individuals right now?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you go to a lesser number, they're going to have to be hanging on your wall or something like that, otherwise it won't work.
Are we talking about parking permits or?
Yeah, parking permits.
Oh, just parking?
Well, I was talking about the actual parking spot.
Yeah, because they, the fishermen get spots that are marked off just for their.
Yeah.
Talking about parking? I was talking about.
Boat parking?
The dock space.
That I was talking about.
Boat space.
Floats is not an issue because, yeah, the float's not an issue because they, they, they come, they get rid of their, their, bring their catch to market, they leave. I mean, there hasn't been an issue yet with, hey, I need to get my boat in and there's a boat there. I mean, a couple of them, but I hear it right away. It's like instantaneous and I fix it.
Do you have any comments?
I don't. I think that these, I mean, I know a lot of the people on this, I think a lot of us do, and I think it looks pretty straightforward to me.
Marco?
I, I, I'm fine with this. I would just suggest if we're not using the parking space that we reserve for them properly, maybe we try returning a couple to the use of the town and seeing how that works.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
I would agree with Steve. I think in the next cycle, we need to put out an agenda as to how we approach that.
Yep.
Um, is my, my only concern is, is the waste management issue. And the trash that I, there are so many zip ties that are getting snipped day after day after day after day and not getting cleaned up.
You mean like next to the hoist?
They use zip ties as part of their operation and then it's much easier just to cut them and leave them than it is to cut them and pick them up. And little things like that, a lot of traps that are left that then get used as waste receptacles. Just maybe a little more when, when they, I don't know who thinks it's funny to put trash in the traps all the time.
Beer cans in the, I see that.
And sometimes in there, I see people do it and they're like, oh, I know him. I'm doing it because I know him. And I'm like, oh, um.
Yeah, so you're basically saying I should.
Like, crack down a little bit on just like making sure that everything gets cleaned up. When you, when things are left on the floats that can fall into the ocean.
Yeah, yeah.
That are trash, then.
Yeah, I can hear that.
Cool. Any other, any other comments?
I would make a motion, unless Mark would like to.
I've made enough already tonight.
I move that we approve, um, the commercial fisherman float permit applications for Arthur Andrews, Barney Appleton, Kent Bradstreet, Mark Bradstreet, David Emery, Wilbur McCall, Adam Scott, Brad Scott, Art Tibbetts, Toby Winkelhofer, and Gary Talbot.
Second.
Any other discussion in the Select Board? I'm not hearing any. All those in favor? 4-0, thank you for this one. On to the consideration of the 2020 day sailor license applications and the associated agreements and addenda, addendum. They're in the packet. Um, Mark, did you want to say anything to them? I know you already talked a lot about it last time, but, um, there's been some minor revisions in the packet. Did you want to weigh in, or?
I guess I don't understand.
Well, well, first of all, we, we, last time we left, we talked about the vessel license agreement. We had, I didn't make sure I get the right ones here. We only had one question on the license agreement, I believe, which was the insurance.
And I think we were talking about parking quite a bit, and.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I get that. No, I think the parking was in the addendum.
I remember.
I know, I know it gets confusing. But, um, so there was one question about, and that's currently states, based on our surty input, a $1 million policy required for all. Also, just to be completely open, there were a couple of changes made, and I believe it was to this one, Audra, regarding the, the, um, the clean water. Is that, is that the agreement, Audra?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, there it is. Item 7 now talks about the compliance with the federal state and law regulations, including zoning ordinance, harbor and waterways ordinance, the town, Federal Clean Water Act. And it allows the authority for the harbor master to inspect vessel marine devices to ensure sufficient function of those, of those devices. That was one. And then item 8 was also new. The licensee shall use designated main pump-out services and keep a log of when the vessel was pumped and detailing the date and time service and locations. The log can be made available to the harbor master upon request. Lastly, to Allison's earlier point about waste, item 9 now discusses that no solid waste generated on the vessel shall be disposed of in the town trash receptacles. So those were different from the last time, and we just, we just confirmed the $1 million insurance amount for all vessels. Because this is, remember, this is the agreement that applies to all vessels, whether it may be day sailor, um, first boat, second boat, windjammer, or eventually steamboat landing also. So I just wanted to make that clear. So that, that's the only changes to the commercial passenger vessel license agreement. And then to the items specifically at hand, which would apply to all boat users in the harbor, is the, we do have a completed commercial passenger vessel license addendum, which is called, actually, the Public Landing Day Sailor Addendum. And in there, there were a couple of open items. One was the fees for the first year to be specified. And the other one was that you mentioned earlier, Allison, was the close, closing on the issue of parking. Those are in the addendum. So those are the open items that we need to close and resolve, get this thing put to bed, signed, and get our friends working for our three-year agreement. Unless there's any comment or discussion on the, what I just mentioned on the actual master agreement, I'll skip right down to the actual addendum, which does have a couple items to discuss. Not, and the first of which is the fees for the first year, which, if we go by the current, which we'll discuss in a little bit, the harbor.
Hold on, so are we able, I think that together you're making the distinction between the two things. I don't have any comments on the first regular part. Is there, are we likely to receive comments here, or? I'm going to start to get confused if, if we go.
Would you want to approve?
If we do this, and then we go back to the other thing, if they're going to have a.
Why don't we move to discuss and approve the, the license agreement first?
Okay.
Which applies to all.
Sounds good.
All right?
That would be best for me.
And then if anyone wants to speak to it, that's, that's, that's fine. So any discussion on the elements of the commercial passenger vessel license agreement, which is the master agreement for all?
I know it's the one that.
I guess I should speak on that one.
You're more than welcome to, sir.
Come on up here.
Make sure you introduce yourself.
Mark Sigenthaler, Harbor Committee Chairman. On the commercial passenger license agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Last time we discussed this, there were, there were three issues that needed to be determined by the board. One was the insurance.
Correct.
Two was the fees.
Correct.
And three was the parking issue.
Correct.
Okay, so the fees, the, the committee has discussed the fees, and that is the next up on the agenda.
Correct.
Our fee structures. I believe you've, you've talked to the insurance experts.
Yes.
Determined that the insurance should be $1 million. And so that's taken care of. So that leaves the only, well, actually, there's one other, but that, that leaves parking to be an issue that needs to be addressed. And.
Yeah, but, but Mark, we're trying to, just for clarity, because it does get a little confusing. We were trying to just resolve the issues on the agreement first. And the only issue that we had open on the agreement was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Insurance.
Correct, correct.
Okay, but, but in fairness to you, I mentioned there were three items added to the agreement since the last time that you came here. They were about the Clean Water Act, about the pump-out, and about the, about the trash. Those are new elements in this agreement.
Oh, which I haven't seen.
They're in here now.
Okay.
So I believe the Clean Water Act was here. I don't think it was. That was there. So seven, seven was there.
Water was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought that was not there. But then the other ones were, then the other two. One was trash to be collected by the individual, and also the tracking of pump-out.
Okay.
Those two are added. And as simple as that. And it, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mark.
So then the, the other adjustment I would recommend is paragraph 2.
On the agreement?
On the agreement.
Okay.
Sorry.
Uh, I'm sorry, no.
No, that's the term of the agreement.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, the other change I would recommend is on the.
Addendum.
Addendum.
Okay, good. So then.
One thing they have, one thing that's on the day sailor license agreement is the day sailor addendum. They use it or lose it clause.
Yes.
That's on.
We're, we're just kind of sticking to the agreement right now.
Okay.
At that piece. And if we could, I'd like to get that approved. If we could, then we could go on to the addendum. Does that sound fair?
Sounds perfect.
Okay. Are there any, anybody wants to comment, or are there any comments or motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the day sailor license agreement.
No, it's the commercial passenger vessel license agreement.
Oh, I'm reading off the, sorry.
The umbrella document.
Yes.
It says day sailor license agreement on my thing here. I make a motion that we approve the commercial passage vessel agreement.
Okay. Do I have a second? Any discussion on this overall, overreaching umbrella agreement?
Well, the one thing it does say here is in the, I'm reading off of the packet. This is review of day sailor license agreement. It still has $500,000 in the.
Oh, that's, that's not part of the agreement. That was just notes that were provided by the committee.
Okay.
We never, we did not get into the item other than insurance. We did not get into the use or lose it. And we didn't change anything on the second boat addendum, which that's another issue.
We did not, we're not.
Yeah, the only element of that documented effects was then item 10, which was the amount of insurance.
Okay, then that still says.
But that's, that's just a note that was provided to us by.
Okay.
The committee.
Working off the packet.
From a previous meeting?
So with, with.
Yes.
Here are motions made and seconded. And any more discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor approving the vessel agreement? 4-0, fine. Now, so now we check the next one, which will be the Public Landing Day Sailor Addendum. To your point, Mark, there are remaining two, I believe, two items on that document, which, the first of which is the fees for the first year, and the second would be, I believe, the parking. I believe that's the only two on that agreement that was left for discussion. Well, because we already, we talked about the ticket sales thing, and we basically agreed last time to leave it as is.
Yes.
That one, that's, that was on there, but we'll clean that up. And then, so, so we, so the only reason, right now, your, the harbor fees recommendation from the committee lists $2,600.
Correct.
And that's one option.
Under, under the fees, also in the addendum.
Yeah.
Says payable January 1st. Now, when we were reviewing the fee structure, on the back of that, it's got, um, a different payment schedule for day sailors.
Right, right.
Which I would suggest we follow.
Okay. Which is what?
Which is, um, invoiced by March 1st, payable as follows, one half April 1st, balance August 1st.
One half for August.
August 1st.
Second half August 1st.
All right. All right, so invoice 3, 1, half 4, 1, half 8, 1. That's what you're suggesting?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, is that, so, well, is any comments from anybody on the, maybe, by the way, we can always defer the, the discussion about the fee to the harbor committee total list, but right now, it suggests going from, the current agreement's, I believe, at 2,500. And the recommendation, as I've heard to the harbor committee, is 2,600. So you're basically applying a cost of living increase, whatever you want to call it, escalation factor.
Correct.
For the first year, for the first year, right?
For?
The first year.
Well, we don't. Three-year agreement, though.
It's a three-year agreement. We don't call for any adjustments in the fees.
It says subject to annual review each year.
Okay.
No, it's, this is the fee section. It says subject to annual review each year on January 1st, so it could change each year.
Okay.
I mean, we're not allowed to sign agreements for more than a year anyway, so it's kind of just.
That's right, we can't. So we have to have the, if that's not clear, we can make that clear, that this is subject to annual adjustment. And, you know.
I agree.
I bet Bob and I are up for reelection.
Huh?
Bob and I are up for reelection too, so we get a lot of fish bags.
Whatever. Is there any comment on the $2,600 for the first year? Is it clear that this is going to be an annual review in that language? Is it clear to you, Mark? Because you didn't seem clear.
Where does it say the three-year part? I mean, I get the idea of, I don't know, we can technically only do yearly. That's where it says the three-year part?
No, no, that's, that's, that's. That's in the, in the master agreement. It talks about being a three.
Umbrella document.
Very well. In the umbrella document, it speaks to three years, yes. And this addendum just says, you know, the fees for the first year will be, well, whatever the number.
Why are we doing that? Why do we just?
You're right. And it does say subject to an annual review each year, yes.
So it's, but, but that, I guess the spirit of that is that even though we recognize that technically it has to be subject to annual review because that's where our form of government works, that as a group, we are kind of saying, we aren't going to make a big fuss about this for three years. We are kind of, I mean, we don't know if any of us are going to be here, and.
Well, I think it's, I think it's, and I understand as a, as a business person, you don't want to sign something that says, okay, it's 2,600 now, and next year it's going to be $7,000.
Right, exactly. They're kind of.
I, I think it can be honest to state that, for the town's perspective, in general, you'll hear it in discussion on fees, we're kind of just looking at escalation factors, you know, for inflation. You have to come forward.
Well, are.
All things remaining equal.
All things remaining equal, yeah. The town isn't going to get rich on charging seven boats, you know, another X hundred dollars each. And that's not what we're going here. But I think, in fairness to, whether we snowball or XYZ, we should, everybody charges us, the town, escalation factors for whatever we do. And it's usually, today it's around 2% or 3%. That's usually the kind of thing. That's kind of the, the mode that we're in. So that's probably what we should be going forward. Aaron, you wanted to say something?
I think you should just put it in there like that.
Not to exceed an X percentage or something like that.
I mean, we can't technically, we cannot, we shouldn't have, I don't think we should have approved the.
Three years.
Three-year thing because we don't have the authority to do that.
We got, the windjammer is already three years.
We're matching the wind.
What is, I was going to say, isn't that what the windjammer does now? There's just like a stagnated fee already when you assign yourself for a three-year contract.
I mean, we can't sign three-year contracts.
That's, well, I mean, Gas Ray, but I think that's how the.
Doing it, but the town doesn't.
That is how we've been doing the windjammers, regardless of what the law says.
Technically allowed.
Allison's correct.
Right, Audra? So.
Charter says. It's, well, it's more, it's state, it's state statute that a board can't bind another board to an action in perpetuity, or in, you know, beyond.
A reasonable.
Right. And in the harbor ordinance, it states that the windjammers get a three-year agreement, and that's why that's sort of always been done that way.
Correct.
I mean.
So our ordinance violates state statute.
Kind of. I guess it's what, it's what you define as in perpetu, and that's why everything has been a license agreement. That's kind of, and we have a lot of provisions in this that at any point in time, the Select Board has the authority to review and change and. So you do, I mean, you, a lot of provisions are built into these agreements so that you can get around that statutory requirement, or that you're able to work within that statutory requirement.
Statutory requirement says in perpetuity.
Well, it says the actions of a, one board can't bind another board.
For in perpetuity, but it doesn't say one year.
That can only be done through, like, the legislative body.
All right, all right.
See, the way I understand this, it's, it's, yes, it's a three-year agreement, but it's an annual.
Review.
Review of this agreement, and it can be terminated at any time.
What's really meaningful is the three-year part is, I mean, it's, well, meanwhile, it's kind of like a.
It's more of, you're not.
Spirit of the.
You're not making them go through the process every year. They can, they can use it for financing purposes to say that they've got this agreement in place.
It's a business advantage to have a document that says, this thing's going to go for three years.
It was, it was a hardship for them to, to apply every year.
It's a hardship.
I understand that part. I just was trying to get away from doing things that we.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we've got to be careful not to get too specific on what Aaron was suggesting, but I think annual review, I think that, like I said, I don't know what words to put in there.
It covers it.
I think it covers it, yeah. There's no interest in.
I believe so. I mean, if, if you put in there a.
Fixed.
A fixed increase, then you are leading to a three-year agreement.
Well, and I got to remember, in 1970 something, was inflation was 17%. That's hopefully never going to happen again, but I don't want to tire ourselves.
You're better not specifying any of this, being as vague as possible.
I, I think our track record has been not to have major jumps in the cost per year for these boats, including the windjammers, as we get to that next. This is just, we have to have this so we can do it every year. I mean, they're proposing right now a $100 increase from the 2,500, which is the current base. So I, I get your point. I do, because I'm.
I mean, in my lifetime, I've had to experience a 40% increase without a warning.
Yeah, well, I can't talk to history.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, I, I get it. No, I get it. I get it.
The risk is real.
But you know, if we get to a place where we can't, and don't feel like we're working together and talking, then we've already lost both of us.
We can't legally keep it to three, because we have to do it under review.
But we can talk all right now.
But that way, you get your three-year agreement, so you don't have to do what you had to do through every year.
I think the progress is fantastic. I don't want to detract from that.
Okay, thank you. Let's.
You were saying, for the first year, we're voting on this for the first year, for the fir, you kept saying for the first year, for the first year.
It is for the first year.
So it made it feel like maybe such an emphasis on, this is what it's going to be for the first year.
Well, I just wanted to be clear that we have an annual review, and our approval of reasonable, or minimal increases will not be unreasonably withheld, that's all we're saying, you know, we have to work together.
And I think it's important, too, and I think Bob's pretty much saying, but to acknowledge that we certainly, I think I can speak for, but we don't want to make it untenable for the windjammers or the day sailors to be here. I mean, that's a huge, hugely important part of our economy, it's a hugely important part of our culture, I think we'd be pretty much shooting ourselves in the foot or higher if we did something that would alienate from a fee perspective. I just, I think that, I mean, it's, it's hard to say, "Don't worry about it, it'll be fine," but I think that's really what, I hope that we can all trust each other and work together.
I do understand that there could be changes in the seat that I'm sitting in, or any of us are, and I understand that.
Reasonable, nominal, changes if necessary.
I appreciate what you said.
Yeah, okay. So, at least until we discuss the harbor fees, we'll stick with the $2,600 for the first year. On the parking issue, we have, we discussed leaving it as is, which gives them a parking permit and fine for a couple of months of the year, as I believe it is, potentially charging an additional fee for the parking for the summer months, or eliminating in the option altogether, that's as listed here on the draft document from the harbor committee. So we just need to close on that last issue, and then we can move on the addendum. Any comments?
I think that we should save this for next year.
Okay.
And that, as part of our look at the fisherman permits and the idea of
Yep.
the paid-up park thing and the public land, we're going to look at that comprehensively and...
I can tell you, I can tell you that that is Taylor's opinion also, Mark.
It's to keep it the way it is right now. I'm fine with that.
Where did Jenna go?
Jenna, I was thinking that, too, we needed her for parking.
Yeah, we're going to sing a few songs in between here and their commercial, no, we'll just wait a second, but just, I think that was, that's the last item, right, Mark? Do we have to close on this addendum, is just the parking thing?
That is.
What about, while we're waiting, what about the use-it-or-lose-it idea for the licenses? What was your discussion about that?
Have a lot of people not using their day sailors?
Yeah, the committee brought this up because there was one vessel, Sally, that didn't make it in
Right.
because of certain reasons, she was getting worked on and something, so that was just brought up, like, okay, well, if the select board is going to issue a permit, imagine you expect that, that vessel to be running, at least in the water, trying to run, providing, you know, a trip to visitors, to people.
Yep.
Yeah, that's all it is.
So we discussed it, and it's now put in that if you, if you're going to get a license, that it's expected that your boat's going to be in the water, and you're going to be trying to get people to go on it. Obviously, if times are real bad, and you're ringing your bell, and no one's coming, at least you're trying, the boat's in the water.
Right, right, right. Well, I believe in the agreement, as I recall, the umbrella agreement, it talks about annual reviews of what's going on with the individual deciding that agreement, meaning that, for example, if there's 15 problems we had with one boat, so, you know, the bad things, you know, which has never happened, but we want to be able to discuss that with that licensee, so it could be the same thing with the not using it, and I think we should be attentive with that, and, go ahead, Aaron, a second, be attentive to that, from your perspective as harbor master, we need that feedback from you.
I agree with everything you just said, I just think you should...
That's all right.
I felt awkward.
You can sit down, I can...
The only thing I would suggest, just being one of these crazy wooden boat owners, every once in a while, like in 98, they shut the OLAD down for a year to rebuild it.
Oh.
Which happens occasionally, so if you just wrote a provizio in there, minus, like, we just paid the fee to be back, but we had to rebuild the boat, there was needed a year, so...
Well, I...
There'd be like a review process.
Some addendum in there for big mechanical slash...
It could, but honestly, if you have, I believe, I believe, not expert, but out in the law, if you have to repair something, you can't use that as reason to terminate a license from an agreement. It's different than having it operable and not using it, there's two different definitions.
Yeah, but you might actually go in, just, I don't know how to word this, but you might actually go into the season, like, knowing that you aren't going to be operating the boat at all, like, it's possible, it's happened.
Oh, I see, because of a major problem with the boat.
Right, like, you might find something, the Coast Guard says, "Well, we'll give you a year to repair that," but, so I don't know how to deal with that, but I just thought of that, like, about a month ago, and I just wanted to say out loud, because I could think of three boats that have been through that Camden Harbor's life.
Yeah, especially with wooden boats.
I mean, is it worded right now as an automatic, use it or lose it?
No, it's not worded that way.
Because that would be, there's a process, you have to, who's going to define what is using it? I would think that would be like, the harbor master could refer it to the select board.
We can table it for now and...
Yeah, but that's a good point, I think we should consider going forward, but I don't think it's anybody's intent, I can't speak for the entire town, but I would think there should be our intent that we're not looking to be punitive here unless you come and say, "I'm not going to be using it for a year and a half, two years," we really should have the option of bidding it out to somebody else.
We could just say, "We reserve the right."
Yeah, we could do that. Well, it does say, actually, there's no provision here for taking the license, there's no use-it-or-lose-it provision in the documents, however.
There is, it says it somewhere, whether it's in the harbor committee recommendations.
That's the suggestions they were talking about. I'm just kidding.
That wasn't the harbor committee...
It's use it or lose it.
That was, that was the harbor committee's recommendation, it would, nothing was done in agreement, to my knowledge, that specifies use it or lose it.
Right.
The current agreement, the way we drew it up, does not
Yeah, that's right.
have that worded.
We're having some issues with the HDMI cable over there.
But Steve, 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 have you just stand there and hold it for the rest of the night?
It's really something wrong with it now. It might not be good.
So the committee suggested that the
That's what I thought.
select board come up with a proper wording, the select board or the attorney come up with a proper wording for the use it or lose it. That was...
Yeah, I remember that.
It's what we discussed, and then since then, we did have a use-it-or-lose-it paragraph drawn up.
Right.
Which we would suggest you look at.
But it's never been inserted, so I suggest we move with what we have now and consider it for the, with the agreement of the captains to insert it at another time to make sure we don't get in any problems between us, because we really want to get something on the table so we can sign it now, you know, and I think that's smart.
Or we just say, "We reserve the, the town Camden reserves the right to end the license agreement due to non-use of..."
Well, it gets a little, it gets a little more technical than that, that's the problem, I think we should, we should word it correctly, we should do it, we just, we got two choices, we can either delay it until we get it done and written by an attorney, and then come back to it, we can do that, or just go as is, which has no use-it-or-lose provision, but agree to provide one in the agreement, may asap.
Or, this is not a race, I don't think we have to hurry about this, so something to consider, and let me add a couple of things about that. Number one, if somebody has a license and they don't use it, that would make it a better situation for the rest of the day sailors.
Situation for the town.
Which is not a bad thing, and I am of the opinion that we sort of overcrowded the dockage with when we went from five to seven licenses a couple of years ago. So I'm more interested in if somebody backs away from their license, maybe not renewing, finding somebody to replace it at some point, but that's not a consideration we have to have today. I would, today, I would just leave it as is, and we, it's something we can talk about, there's no need, I think, to rush to get it into this agreement. I would leave this one as is, and then we just have to go back to Jenna, because we were talking about parking when you stepped away for a moment.
Yeah, and I was actually parking aside, and I want to hear about that just in one second, but the use-it-or-lose-it thing, I just, I think about one of these poor guys, or maybe some women someday, pulling their boat out, having a big problem, it takes two years to fix it, and they lose their license after they've spent all this money getting their boat seaworthy and passenger-worthy, and that seems like, I mean, I won't use the language I want to use, but that seems like a real kick in the pants.
That's not what we would do.
That just concerns me, I just feel like that's, I mean, I actually am part, I like the idea of reserves the right, because I think if that's how we're going to do it, but I also understand that there's, there are significant technicalities, but I just, I see that going, I mean, being such a hardship for someone if it's, if it's improperly applied.
We don't have a record, like, the whole purpose of this, though, is for, is to make sure that the harbor is, is used, and we want to make sure that we're, it would only be used in a situation where the harbor master is telling us there's not enough activity going on in the harbor because we've reserved spaces for boats that are not actually in use, and would be like a last resort measure.
Well, that's what I would like to think as well, but, I mean, that it's just...
We already have a...
I'm just curious, we think it's an actual issue, is it actually likely to be an issue? In your pit, I mean...
No, it's not, it's just a thing we're looking forward, looking at for discussion.
Well, in this agreement, we agree, we can always improve it, but Article G of the, of the public landing daily agreement says, "The town maintains the right to amend this agreement at its sole discretion." So that, that gives you the ultimate power of changing anything you want, now, I think it, by the way, is probably too broad, for fairness, but a little strong, but I think it covers a lot of eventualities, and I think we should leave it at that for this point, and not overtry it.
Nice point. Yeah, that is a good point.
I mean, it's good, but good comments, and thank you, Aaron, Captain Lincoln, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that should cover it.
So, what we were discussing on parking was some of the consensus, I know Taylor had mentioned to me, as is, and we'll address it next year, where you address the floats for the fishermen and their parking thing, because the parking is an issue, and I think, Mark, you were saying that you would suggest leaving it?
I'm fine with leaving it the way it is.
How do you feel, Jenna, you're close to parking stuff, don't you?
I really don't, I mean, because my family owned a parking lot. I think it's fine, I honestly think it's absolutely fine, unless Steve was standing here saying, "Please change it," or any of the folks here, I personally, it is, it doesn't, I don't see it as being a tremendously impactful thing
Okay.
to change or not change, unless I have a compelling...
So what I might...
It's really hard to find a parking spot down there, that's one reason.
So what I would do at this point is, I will move to accept the public landing day sailor addendum as written, with the exception of adding, Item A, $2,600 for the fee for the first year, and two, leaving the parking paragraph as it is today for future discussion. Oh, no, I missed one, I'm sorry, I have to amend my motion to have the fees at $2,600 for the first year payable, billable, invoicing on March 1st, payable first half on April 1st, second half on August 1st, and the other item then would be to leave the parking as it is written.
Second to the amended motion.
Should you add, leave the ticket sales as is also? Is there a three options?
Yeah, I should, last time we had agreed on that one, I'll amend it one more time. Just to be clear, we would accept the draft of the commercial vessel license agreement addendum for public landing day sailors, two, reflect in Item A, $2,600 for the first year with invoicing on the March 1st of each year, payable, April, half payable on April 1st of each year, and the other half payable on August 1st of each year. The document, we agreed that we would leave ticket sales as is, and that parking will also be left as is.
Second to the amended motion.
Discussion, those in favor? 4-0. Thank you very much. So while we're hot and heavy on the harbor stuff, let's talk to the harbor fees.
Should you do the second boat addendum?
Oh. Thank you.
That's a simple one.
Yes, we have a draft for the commercial, for the umbrella, second boat ticket sales addendum, which is...
Second boat tickets, oh.
Yeah, but I would, I would move to accept that one as written, except...
It needs a fee.
Yeah, it needs, it needs to add the fees of $2,600. Nope, what is it? All right, tell me what it is. But while he's searching that out, do we ever resolve why the chairman is signing these things, which has been done in the past?
$600 on the new...
Okay, but should you or the chair be designated to sign town agreements?
Oh, I mean, what you've been doing is, you've been giving me the authority to sign.
Thank you.
You should be making this point. I already know the answer based on all of your...
Thank you, thank you. It's $600, is that right? Okay, so the motion would be to accept the second boat ticket sales addendum as drafted, except in Item A, for an additional fee of $600 to be payable on...
billed on March 1st, payable...
April 1st.
Or is it going to be that whole, like, da-dum, da-dum?
I think it should, I think for $600, I would suggest we have it invoicing on 3-1 and payable on April 1st.
And now, just to be clear, that does not come with its own special parking spot, right?
Correct.
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 Absolutely correct, that's the way it's written.
And ticket sales can only be from pre-existing tables.
So is that motion clear?
To everybody?
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor? 4-0, thank you very much, and again, for the second time, on to the discussion of the Town of Camden 2020 harbor fees. Recommendations, and again, these are recommendations, we, these fees, and I believe Audra on the fees, the so-called draft fee schedule at the end of the agenda here, those are all for discussion tonight, should be approved in January or so.
Yes.
So the agenda item said approval of...
It doesn't, it should say discussion.
It was alarming.
It should, you know, it's discussion with all the other fees for budgetary purposes for the forthcoming budget. Okay.
Oh.
What happened?
We have to do, we need to put it in the budget to handle this, to protect the HDMI cord somehow.
So to be clear, and the items in red shown are recommendations of the harbor committee for increases or flat, if there's none listed, correct? So, for, for example, there's a waitlist renewal, late fee of reduced to $40 to be the same. I don't want to discuss these. Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, let me get the rationale on it, I think it's a good idea, Mark.
Can I back up just for a minute?
You may.
Last motion?
Yep.
Just for clarification, you did approve all the applications.
Oh, yeah, I don't know if we ever said that.
No, we didn't.
We did not.
We didn't.
Should we make a new motion?
No, make an additional motion for the seven boat owners for their license applications, right? Yep. And do we have, yeah, we have them listed, we have them listed here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
I move that we approve them all as printed on our agenda.
Second.
Those in favor? Thank you, Mark, saved us a little aggravation, and we have to sign those, too, don't we?
Them, too.
Okay, discussion of the, back to the discussion of the 2020 harbor fees.
So, starting from the top, late fees.
Yep.
The waitlist renewal late fee, we reduce that to standardize all late fees at $40, just seemed to kind of make sense and clean things up.
Okay.
Moving down, when we look through this fee schedule, what our intention was, was to, was to, what's the word I'm looking for, make things equitable, more equitable, equitable across the board, and it wasn't a case of just being able to raise fees because we can, okay? We didn't feel that was appropriate, it's just balancing things out. So, with that said, with the finger floats, we raised that $50 to $750.
Yep.
And what that was, is for non-residents, it was $1,500. Our standard practice was to charge non-residents twice what we charge residents. Statute states that we can charge up to five times for non-residents than residents. So that just equalized that. On the...
Elliot? Thank you.
Inner harbor floats, we felt that was, that's just a bargain, so we raised those $200 for both transient and resident, non-resident floats.
Can I ask, um, so I've struggled with the term transient because it seems like what that really is is commercial, right?
I'm going to let Steve explain that.
Me, do.
Transient is, it means it's a, it's a commercial float. It's, it's no one person's float. You don't have to have your boat on that float because it's not for one boat. It's for visiting boats coming for three days, a day.
So, right, so a business owns that.
Correct.
And they can charge whatever they want.
Yeah. Well, when I first got here, the town actually set the rates for that. And then about eight years ago, we decided, the town said, well, we shouldn't be deciding what the rates are. So they can make, they can set the rate whatever they want.
I'm not sure why we have those commercial floats at all, because it seems like the town should be making the money instead of the, how many do we have?
Uh, yacht club has three sides.
Okay, well, that's a little different because they're sort of a.
And the, uh, Leman Morris has three sides.
Three sides.
Yeah, meaning that they've got a whole float that's there.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Each float has two sides, two boats per float.
So those are the trans, that's the 750 transient?
Yeah.
Talking about.
It's, I mean, it's a commercial. The yacht club is a little different, in, in my opinion, than a private enterprise, depending on your perspective, but.
Yeah, well, the yacht club's doing the same thing. They're, they're providing a, a spot for a transient boat. Just like the fact that, that Leman Morris has, you know, 30 moorings in the outer harbor, that they also rent for.
The idea is, you know, we kind of hope that the yacht club's as accessible as it can be, and they're a partner with the town, and we want them to take good care of the building that we lend to them and all this stuff. But I have a hard time justifying the, the, these commercial.
Operations.
Operate, yeah, I'm, that are, and that's just something to, I just want to make sure as we go down the list that I understand transient and.
Can I ask a question? So we're renting transient float for $750 for a year. What do they charge for people to tie up there?
They charge, depending, it fluctuates during the season.
Right.
It's about $45 a night, per night. So July and August, they'd fill up. The rest, the rest of the times.
Extravagantly.
It's not by the foot?
No, not for the inner harbor floats. Because you can only put up to a 42-foot boat.
Looking at Josh for a nod or a, I mean, I don't know if we want to like put Josh on trial right now about Leman Morris's fees, but just in general, it is, it's, I just don't understand why, that's an opportunity for the town to make money. So why aren't we?
Well, no, in the past, it's, the town's always let the marina have, you know, they need to operate. So they, it's just the same thing as they have, giving them the, all the floats that they have in the harbor.
Yeah, a bigger question to me is that, to that point is, is, what's the demand for an inner harbor float right now? How many people on the waitlist?
Uh, I think there's 40 on the waitlist. It's about an eight-year, eight-year, nine-year waitlist.
Live here, want to use it, and they can't use three of them because they're being used by commercial operations. Three by yacht, I heard, three by yacht club and three sides, by yacht club and by Leman Morris.
Yeah. And I think it's three sides by, by, by Leman Morris. Now, the folks that are, there's a lot of folks that will say, hey, I'm going to be cruising for two weeks, and they'll let.
For sure.
They'll let Leman Morris, you know, manage that for them. And the yacht club does the same thing. The yacht club will manage.
Yeah, I understand that. It's very common.
I'll, saying, hold on. A lot of people that have inner harbor floats that.
Let's say they go, it says in the ordinance, if you're going to go cruising for, for two weeks, you should either alert me, the harbor master, or someone that's going to.
No, it says you. It says very clearly that it has to be you, and it has to be approved by you. They can't just go out to Leman Morris and say, hey, you want to rent my space out for a little bit?
Yeah, I think the ordinance basically says that you have to use an approved marina. And we even, it says what that is. They've got to be able to have communications via VHF. They got to take care of trash.
The, the Army Corps did away with allowing that kind of brokering, like you could have. We, like, read about what happened in Belfast. They, it's like this approved broker situation was not considered to be. Okay, but that's a whole, so are people profiting off of their, they're trying to, they have an inner harbor float, and then they're.
Yeah, supposedly there's no, no one making a profit on this. That's what I'm, you know, that's why we, we usually, we'll, it says in the ordinance that, that you, you say, okay, here's how many times we rented this. Here's how much it costs to have it for, for the year, which is what we're discussing now. Here's how, here's how much it costs to have it inspected every year. So.
It should all have to go through the harbor master. It shouldn't be these, every, the more I learn about this, it's just so many layers of.
We should get together and talk then, because that's not how it is now.
Yeah.
That's definitely not how it is now.
I thought it was like, just like with the moorings. So if you have, if you're not going to be, say, Bob's not going to be on his mooring, or if he wants to let somebody else use his mooring, that has to go through you.
Correct.
It should be the same way with the floats.
I think it's an interesting point. We need to discuss it. But to the point of the dollars, at $750, you only need to rent it out 16 nights to break even.
Yeah, I'm, and I'm not talking about shutting it down. I'm just saying, I think it should be higher.
Yeah, well, you think of those nights, July and August is the only, is really the only viable times that you're going to rent it.
So you don't have.
So how many times, how many times can you rent it?
It's probably around 30 or 40, maybe.
I mean, if, if we have a shortage of people wanting commercial floats, then, then we'll know we put it too high. But, I mean, we're not approving it tonight.
No.
So I'm sure there's some, that's why I'm kind of saying everything. And then I'm sure people will be like, I heard what you said, this is like remaining, and you've got it wrong. And there'll be plenty of time to.
I agree. I think you need to come back with a recommendation as to why we should approach it or not, and what's being done and what should be done in terms of you being the control point for our harbor and our inner floats versus anyone else. That's really the fundamental issue. Secondarily, it's dollars, of course, but.
Because why would it be different than with the moorings? It says very clearly that with the moorings, you have to be the one that says.
That's what, that's what it says.
Yeah.
I know that that's sometimes not the practice, but that is what I've gathered, that it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, for moorings, if you're not going to, if you're not going to use, it says you're encouraged to tell the harbor master if you're not going to use it for, you know, more than two weeks, or even a day.
Right.
Now, obviously, if someone's not going to tell me, oh, I'm going for two days, I, I don't have to. But if they're going to be gone for a month or two weeks, then yeah, I put it on a list, and you come to me and say, hey, I need for July 15th or whatever. I said, oh, well, here, you can call Audra, because she's not using her mooring for that, those, those weeks. And then I put, I put that person in contact with the other mooring owner, and.
That's true.
But the point is that you have to be the point of connection. Bob can't just say on his own to somebody.
Sure.
Hey, you can use my mooring.
Well, and to that point, you know, the yacht club will say, here's a list of people that are, that are saying that we can put someone on there when they're, when they're away. So they're informing, informing me that they're doing it.
Right, that's where it should be.
Yeah. That's, that's.
But you're saying that that's not the way it works with the inner harbor floats.
No, the harbor floats as well. They'll say, here's a list of the people that are, are saying to us, they're going to be gone for more than a week, then they're letting us know. And if we need someone to put, to put on that, whether they're charging them or not.
But then you, you said that some of them go directly to Leman Morris or a, not to single up Leman Morris.
And the Leman Morris, Leman Morris will give me a list as well. But as far as money, the, the Leman Morris gets half the money because they're managing it. The harbor, the town doesn't get half the money because.
Well, I guess.
Say I have an inner harbor float.
Yeah, I was going to say, if, if a resident, myself or Allison, has an inner harbor float, and we, who do we contact? We're not going to use it in the next two months.
It's up to you. You can contact me and say.
That's the point she's making.
Yeah.
I think the point I'm hearing, which I kind of agree with, is it should be you.
Yeah, all go through me.
It can be through you, or it can be through another broker that I might choose.
Yeah, yeah.
But it has to be.
That's something you want to change in the ordinance, and we can.
I don't understand why we would do it any differently for the inner harbor floats than we would for the moorings.
I'm not sure the harbor ordinance says that exactly either.
On the.
You need to check that.
On the application or.
Do you want to know exactly what it says?
Yep.
Yes.
Please.
Any person not planning to use a mooring for more than three days, and this is under the section that says mooring floats, mooring and mooring float usage, so section I of that, any person not planning to use a mooring for more than three days is encouraged to notify the harbor master in order to utilize mooring space to the highest possible degree.
No, but then there's, there's.
That's, that's all it says about that.
Encouraged and required are different.
It is.
No, no, it's not about, you, you, you wouldn't, it's, it's the process if you want it to go to somebody else. It might say it on the application for a mooring. I guarantee you, it says that you, it can't go through.
I think we should clarify.
The difference between like a temporary versus a long-term.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
The 45-day versus if, if you're going to be gone cruising for three days or.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
The bottom line is, we should at least clarify how, what, what, when it says, I don't hear anything really negative, it says they should be notifying you, that that would be the preferred approach, that any of the floats that are in the harbor that are not being used, except, accepting the, if we agree with the three, with three and three, for the Camden Harbor Yacht Club and the, and the Leman Morris should go through you. So if I had a float, and I wasn't going to use it for this summer, or a few weeks, I need to go to you.
Yeah.
That should be me.
Well, if you're not going to use it for the summer, you have to go through the town. But if you're not going to use it for four days, then they, then in the past, they'll, they can go to a marina and say, or yacht club and say, yeah, I'm cruising. So go ahead and use it. I'm not going to use it.
Yeah, but I think they should go through you.
Hmm.
Means.
I mean, it just gives you more control. Well, only because this, this asset is worth a lot of money. And I'm not talking about changing the dollars. I'm really not looking at that part. But, and, I forget, take the word dollars out. It's worth a lot of convenience to any boater to have an inner float. And, you know, I took my name off the list because I didn't want to give it the, when my name came up, I didn't want to give it to my grandchildren because I wasn't going to live long enough. Seriously, again, it was 53 out of 50-something back when on that list. So the inner harbor float's kind of hard, it's unattainable to an extent. But the people, in preference, should be given to the people who were on that list. If, if, and that's to your discretion, to your discretion.
Right. Because otherwise, it turns into this kind of sketchy thing where you see it, there, there are different boats on these moorings, and you don't know. How do you keep track of how many days? If, okay, they're cruising for three or four days, then they do that multiple times during the summer. How did, and they never have to notify you because it's, I mean, it just doesn't, it's difficult to keep track.
It all depends how, hey, how tight you want to, you know.
Mark, you got something hot?
I do. This comes from the Camden Harbor waitlist application.
Yes, thank you.
And on the backside of that is mooring, mooring float usage. So what it says under that, the owner of a mooring or float gear may charge the temporary, charge the temporary user for annual fees and for appropriate maintenance costs as determined by the harbor master. So if you're not using the float, you can recoup your cost, but nothing more, as determined by the harbor master.
Same with the mooring.
I see. Right, thank you. All right, I think that's, that's an action we want to discuss and finish close on in next month when we bring it to approval time. Are there any other items on this list of changes, Mark, or anybody that we want to take a look at that are substantially different or have any other elements to it? We've already discussed the day sailor one.
So, no, there were no, no changes in resident and non-resident mooring fees, except for the non-resident, less than 20 feet. The 250 was changed to 260, just because I think that was a typographical error made a couple of years ago.
250 to 300. Oh, I see. I see.
Yeah. And then.
Mm-hmm.
Everything else is pretty straightforward. Again, there were no fee increases for dinghies.
Yep.
What we added were, the town owns one inner harbor float?
One half.
One half.
Right.
Inner harbor float.
Right.
So we added, right there, float overnight fee.
Yep.
$50 per night.
I see.
The big.
Yep.
Change is cruise ship fees.
Yeah, let's go, we'll go back up to, just as a curiosity, we increased the day sailor by $100 for the year, whichever percent that is, but the, but the windjammers, $10.
$10. And that was just to round the number off.
Well, I mean, it seems to me if we're going to discuss things like escalation in cost of living or kind of thing, we should do the same and be fair across the board. In other words, we, we were discussing just a bit ago about day sailors and, and increasing by $100 per year.
Right.
Which was kind of an inflation factor. I think we should proportionally do the same thing with windjammers.
And increase them 100?
Well, whatever the number, no, no, that's not proportionate. That's not proportionate because $4,200 is a lot more than $2,500. So you're probably talking more like $300 or something like that. Whatever, I didn't do the math, but I think you should take a look at that for the next time. Be fair.
Okay.
All right. Mark?
I have a question. I'm, don't have a boat, never had a boat, have a kayak. Don't know much about, you know, like some of the other people here, haven't much experience in. But we did get a letter, select board received a letter today, someone that was in opposition to the fees. And I think we should, I just wanted to read it real quick so we can get some feedback. It's from a gentleman named Avery Brott. Good morning. I write to voice my opposition to an increase in annual fees for use of the finger floats at the head of the harbor. Although I prefer to speak in person at tonight's meeting, I'm employed as a merchant mariner, mariner, and I'm presently offshore. Over the last several years, the harbor rates have increased with regularity, while no improvements to the amenities have been made, with the sole exception of replacing the original wooden floats with the new ones, which are actually smaller. We're getting close to marina-level fees, but aren't afforded the marina-level services of water or electricity or parking. What then are the proposed fee increases funding? As a town-owned facility, it seems to me that the finger float should be seen as a service with the costs offset by my annual fee and taxes, and not as a profit center. If the town is trying to wring more money out of the harbor, consider charging a fee for the pump-out boat, which actually provides a service and costs the town money to operate. Finally, I'd like to recommend that the select board members take a walk down to the floats next summer to survey the size and type of boats that are kept there. They are overwhelmingly very modest vessels intended to get local families out on the water to go fishing or perhaps for a picnic on Curtis Island. These aren't high-dollar crafts, and it would be shameful to price the locals out of their own harbor. Raising the rates needlessly will do just that. Thank you, Avery Brott, Camden. I can't speak to what he said. I thought he should have a voice and, because he took the time to write the letter. Do we have any?
Well, the only reason we raised the fees for the finger floats is, is because we charged non-residents $1,500. And like I said earlier, we charge.
I remember that.
Double. So we just felt that brought that figure into line to standard practices.
Okay. There's, there's one thing about here. It says, we're getting close to marina-level fees, but aren't afforded the marina-level services, water, electricity, parking, et cetera. I don't know if that's legitimate or whatever.
As a, as a boater, I don't agree with that statement. I think marina-level fees for a boat, and I'm sure Leman Morris or Goggins Solutions or others could tell you that there's nothing in the market that gives you without power and water, a couple hundred dollars for alongside mooring. With power and water, you're talking thousands.
Yes.
I mean, I think also, you have to look at what the market, so I, I got that email too, and I appreciate it. It was, it was well-written and love it when people write us emails with their comments. The reason that we increased the fees last year is because of the estimated 12-year waiting list for a finger float. And so just out of curiosity, I asked Liz to send me the.
Waitlist.
Waiting list for finger floats in the harbor to see, you know, is it, is it these people from away that we don't know that are waiting, and we're going to kick out our local people and raise the fees so that people from away with tons of money can do it? It's not, and that's not the case. The people that are on the, the waiting list is overwhelmingly, you know, Camden, Rockport, Camden, 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 Rockport. It's, so it's just, the thing is that having a finger float in Camden Harbor is amazingly awesome, to be able to walk right down to your boat, even the, I mean, when I have a dinghy right there, it's, I, I think it's like I'm the luckiest person in the world that I can have a, for $100, I can have a dinghy right there. So the, I mean, I tend to think that maybe we do, we need to look at continuing to increase it, and really $50 might not be enough. There are, there are moorings. You can get a mooring without having to wait very long.
Yeah, that's true.
So unfortunately, there isn't really a great way to allocate this really high So unfortunately, there isn't really a great way to allocate this really highly coveted resource. We should be making room for kayaks and paddleboards to be stacked on racks down there. Um, some of, some of the people that have kayaks and things that are currently taking up space in the dinghy dock maybe would like to rack them instead, but I don't know. I, that's my response to that.
No, it underscore, you just said, was, as I recall, was last year that we substantially increased the non-resident cost to fifteen hundred dollars. That was a huge jump from the prior years, I recall, because we're trying to make it more beneficial for, uh, the Camden residents. It's, it's our harbor and we want to, to the extent we can, um, maximize that. But I, I really find it hard to, um, think a finger float, this is nothing less than a bargain.
I mean, why not raise the, raise the fees a little bit more for the, um, non-residents for the finger float?
I'm all for it. I mean, Blue Hill goes the five times amount on everything.
Yep.
Really trying, and what we're doing is we're trying to make sure that these remain accessible for people that live here, keeping that price artificially low.
The only, Allison, the only thing that I, that kind of personally is that someone like Rockport, all of a sudden, who's like almost a resident, they're like a next-door neighbor, they get, if we raise it hot, you know, to three times the amount, then you get people that are like, geez, I, you know, I live right here. How come I can't?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's almost like, almost if you could have like a, like a circle that's if you
County, maybe.
Something like that.
Are we allowed to do that?
I, we're allowed to do anything we want. We are.
Or they can just pay some taxes in Camden?
Let's, Jenna or Mark, do you have
Something to talk about?
Communication, this is really a policy thing about the value of an inner float in the perspective of it, rather than zeroing in on the dollars at this moment. I, it is a heck of an asset.
It is.
I think that's
Very limited.
Yeah, extremely limited, extremely limited. So there are two issues we want to discuss going forward, and that is the, what we talked about earlier about the, um, the, with the harbor float, uh, I'm sorry, the inner float costs, the finger float costs, but also the thing about prioritization and everything going through you for the, for the, for the floats in terms of usage by owners.
On use, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there plays a scenario that says we don't, you can't possibly know everything, but somebody could be, you know, inadvertently saying, I'm not going to use my finger float this summer. How about Charlie, do you want to use it? You know, and how are you really going to know that unless you're standing over the finger floats with a, writing down helm numbers?
Well, we know, we do know what boat's supposed to be in that slot.
Okay, okay. You do want to that, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're making sure to give preference to the people that have been on these waiting lists for a long time.
That's what I would think.
Yes. And that's usually what happens. If someone says to me, if someone comes and says, we're not going to use this, then that's
But if they don't have to come to you, if they're allowed to go somewhere else, how do we?
Again, if they're not going to use it for two weeks, then right now, they don't have to go to me. But if they're going to not use it for the forty-five days, for the whole season.
It's not about whether they have to go to you or, it's about whether they're allowed to go somewhere else. If they're willing to let somebody else use.
Yeah, they have to inform, they have to inform the town and actually get a signature, a document, a new, a document that's separate, which is a, you know, a waiver saying, I'm not going to use my, I'm not going to put my boat on because I'm getting it fixed or whatever. Then that's got to go through the town. I've got to read it. I've got to sign it. And it goes, and then I put that on a thing saying, I'm now going to find out someone for that.
That's, that's fine. It's the scenario where they're allowed to go to another broker that we're uncomfortable with.
Yeah, that's something that we can easily
Has to be made clear.
Talk about and make that clear in the ordinance, yeah.
Um, other questions on this? What is a one-H float overnight? It's a zero dollars, fifty dollars per night.
Oh, that's the inner float.
Inner harbor float.
Must be I, I
Oh, okay.
HF.
Sorry.
Yeah, IAF, inner harbor float.
What's one-H?
I think the electricity fees are too low.
Hmm, well, the bigger
It's a lot less than they charge it.
The bigger cost is, the other one I was going to ask is, is the, do you do a comparison of other harbors in terms of birthing overnight, um, per foot length? The two fifty to me seemed low.
It's very low.
We, we kept that low again because if it's under forty, then it's, it's the mom and pa coming from Belfast and from the islands and we didn't, but in the past, is the reason we kept it low is because we didn't want to make it so they didn't want to come to Camden. The bigger, the bigger, that's why we went to the sliding scales.
You're right, for the bigger boats.
Are from away and then we can charge more.
I think we could also look into some kind of distinction between, um, you and I had talked about this before, and I think you had a good, I can't remember the, exactly how you worded it, but maybe it was wooden vessels or, or non-wooden vessels or, um,
Traditional or non-traditional?
Right, and how are you going to define that? But, um, there are the types of, you know, historic wooden vessels that we really want in our harbor because that's what people are excited about. And some people get excited to see the big mega yachts too.
Excitement comes in many forms.
But, um, every year I hear people say, "Rah, rah, 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 rah." Big boat. And I kind of like them because of the lights.
Oh, you heard that too?
But, you know, it's not everybody, but rather than being like, we should be on these. And there must be a way to just charge more based on category. Um, and
That is a slippery slope.
We're not going to charge the Victory Chimes the same, oh, over sixty feet.
No, because it's, because it's a traditional vessel.
You can get like a senior discount for
Wooden vessels or non, maybe the boat people of the world can help us categorize.
I know one guy who would like to get on that, so.
Um, Steve, one recommendation. When you come back
They have boats and non-residents.
When we come back next, next, um, time, let's get this approved. Could you bring back some data on local harbors like Rockport and Belfast, what they're charging for linear footage per foot of boat and also for power?
Rockport Harbor charges two fifty for
Thank you, Mark.
Fifty feet or less.
Okay. And about power?
Three fifty for over fifty feet.
Does it, but does it include power or not include power?
Uh, power is additional.
Yeah.
Say how much?
Uh, same rates that we have, fifteen.
Yeah, Abby's actually got that from, from us.
That's important.
Wind-powered vessels versus non-wind-powered vessels, since we're wanting to cut down on energy use too, and it can be part of the global covenant of marriage.
A person doesn't have to buy the power if they don't want.
No, I'm talking about the, I was back on the other thing.
The actual type of vessel. Yeah. Moving forward, we could do that.
All right.
Moving forward for sure, because I'd see if it's a historic boat or not.
Ooh, a connection request from Aaron's iPhone. Okay.
Mark, you were just about to introduce the big jump in cruise ships.
Yes.
When we jumped in on these other things, which is doubling the cruise ship for a hundred and seventy-five or less, which has been the limit to date, correct?
Correct.
Not one fifty?
No, it's one seventy-five.
All right. Um, the rationale for double?
We have to talk to Mark about that. Um, but I, I think, I gave information to the committee that I had a lot of, um, people that use the harbor say that they were, that they thought that there was definitely, they felt the presence of, of these visiting vessels more so than ever. Uh, meaning getting waked by the, uh, by the ferries coming in and out, um, and other, other things that happen. So basically
Do you feel that?
I definitely feel that, and not, not that we, I don't think we're being overrun, but, but they're coming in more and more. And, um, when they do come in, I, it's a lot more from my department to make sure that we've got a space available for them to safely land and bring the people on and off.
For the launch.
For the launch, yeah. Um, so originally, when I, when I started communications with this company, I'm guessing it was twelve years ago, um, you know, I was happy to try to make it so it was easy for them to come in and establish Camden as a port. Um, and now I'm not sure if that was a good idea personally. I think some people like it and other people, I look at it as like, what is it really bringing to the town? How's it, how's it helping the town? So it's something that needs to be discussed.
Agreed.
Because it's such an impact on the harbor.
Yep.
Um, because other harbors are charging eight dollars per head. We, we decided we would go not to that extreme, but we're going to raise it.
And if you're eight dollars a head, it's, it's less money, eight times one seventy-five is less than sixteen hundred.
Well, no, it's, it's every time they come in, it's eight dollars a head.
Well, this isn't every time you come in. This is for the season.
This, you know, the
That's every time you come in. I'm trying, I'm, what, how does this relate to what other towns are charging for this size boats?
Yeah, it's comparable to what Rockland's charging.
Okay. Which is eight bucks a person.
Every time they come in, yeah.
All right.
So do them that.
What defines a cruise ship, Doug?
Hundred and seventy-five or less.
What's the bottom level?
Well, they have one that's, that's a hundred. So they have one vessel that's a hundred people, one that's, uh,
What point do you start calling, is it, there's this one company or some other, what if some, is there a boat out there that has seventy-five people? Do we call that a cruise ship or is that just a visiting vessel?
The, um, the, the big sailships of the world, about seventy-five.
That's something that we haven't come across yet, so I wouldn't be able to answer that.
You're saying a hundred and seventy-five passengers or less, and there's no lower limit on what makes, what, what's our definition of cruise ship?
Um, big, white, and ugly? I don't know.
Big, white, and ugly. Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know how you define that.
I mean, you know, uh, uh, if the Victory Chimes drops anchor.
Yep.
I'm not going to charge
No.
Kipper or any money to come in. But again, that's because it's a traditional boat.
You know it when you see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much. And they always contact us beforehand to, you know, it's not, it's not like someone's just going to come in and do that.
Moment, is there one cruise ship line that's coming to town? One, okay. So we got one cruise ship line. That's what we're trying to address, but I think Allison's point is, well, we need to think forward about whether or not we're going to have, when Camden gets really much more even special than it is today, the destination of the planet, you're going to get some big ships coming in.
Past harbor committee, we had language, it never got put in, saying that anything over a hundred and seventy-five people, uh, we don't have the infrastructure to accommodate that vessel.
Correct.
Um, I don't believe we ever actually put that in.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, no, I, no, we probably should.
But it's something we should.
I think we should, but I think also to the, there is a dividing point between when, when a vessel becomes a cruise ship, and I don't know what the definition is either. We should think about it going forward. All right.
Um, so is your sense that we're going to prevent, um, th, this particular cruise ship line from coming in with that sixteen hundred dollar fee or that we'll just
Make more money.
Make more money.
Yeah. We're going to be compensated for the use of the harbor.
Yeah, I think
I don't think we're going to, they're going to bat an eye myself.
I think one of the things clearly does is it keeps the bigger boats out. We need to make that clear. Because there are, they do have bigger boats.
What?
I think it's the, it's the one seventy-five passenger less limit that keeps the bigger boats out.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
It's in our fee schedule.
That's correct.
But if we want more teeth, we need to talk about that.
No, if, if we want to put more teeth and say one seventy-five above is not allowed, that's fine, but that's the intent.
Yeah, that's the intent.
The harbor master also have some discretion
Yeah, they
To decide when things are just too much.
All right.
Exactly.
All right.
It had to go through me.
All right. Thanks, Steve. We've got a little more stuff to do, but bring some of those answers if you could. I think you answered some of them. Thanks, Mark, for the information on Rockport.
So just for a factoid that you asked for
Yeah.
On the, um,
Yep.
Finger floats.
Yep.
We charge, uh, we suggest seven fifty.
Yep.
Rockland charges fifty-five dollars per foot, which for a eighteen-foot boat is nine hundred and ninety dollars.
All right, it's, that's why I said, this is, this needs to be considered for what it is. It's a bargain.
That's the city. That's not a marina.
Correct, right. Thank you. No, that's a good data point. Those help. Because I, my limited experience alongside anywhere in this planet, especially in Maine, it's a lot more expensive than you have here for the whole summer.
And the waitlist there isn't nearly as long as it is.
And the waitlist, it, it gives you an indication, but, all right, with that, we'll, um, we'll get to that in probably January sometime to finalize the restructure for the harbor.
It's a weird thing also. I don't understand why we try so hard to make people get their dinghies out for the winter and
Oh. Hmm.
Well, yeah, in the past, we
I think we want to encourage year-round.
In the past, we didn't have any dock systems in the water. Everything was taken out. So of the past eighteen years, nineteen years, it's now made it so we've got four systems that's staying all year round.
Yep.
So now there's an option, an option. If you want to keep it in, go ahead. But we always made it so you had to take it out by October fifteenth because that's when we extracted all the floats.
Right.
And there's only maybe four percent of the people that actually do want to keep their boats in, maybe less. It's usually urgent fishermen, commercial lobstermen that might leave their boat in. They won't have a boat. A couple of people will say, yeah, I'll leave my boat in because maybe there's that one, one or two days that I can go out and take, get a sunset pick.
Right.
I mean, why does it have to be a hundred dollars? I don't, I don't see that we're overrun down there.
Two hundred dollars?
Well, that's just the winter removal fee. Where, yeah, where's the dinghy?
Removals, two hundred.
Dinghy winter permit is a hundred.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It could be less.
It could be more.
It shouldn't be as much as, almost as much as the summer.
We can close on that, um, and change if we want to. That's, we'll close on the next meeting. That's fine.
I'm pushing hard for that, just so everybody knows.
That's cool. Um, with that, I'll move on to the next agenda, which is a public hearing for two applications. And since you stole my cheat sheet, I have to do it verbatim from my memory. Um, the purpose of the public hearing is for the select board to get input from the public on the matters being considered.
Oh, sorry.
Me, you, you, I'm just going to say all this. But the, um,
Yeah, you're doing great.
Thank you very much. I lost where I was. But, um, the, uh, we will ask anybody from the public to come forward and, and comment on, or against, or to speak to the item. Um, when everybody in the public has finished speaking, I will close the public hearing and revert to a decision by the select board. No further public input will be considered at that point unless a select board member has a question of a person who has previously spoken. To that end, we have an application of the Lord Camden Inn at twenty-four Main Street for the renewal of a Class One hotel liquor license. Is anybody from here from the public who's still remaining besides Kendall interested in coming forward and talking about this application? Not seeing anybody, I'll close the public hearing and revert to the action by the select board.
I make a motion that we, um, authorize the liquor license for the Lord Camden Inn.
Second.
Who's in favor? Four, zero. Um, on the application of Sixteen Bayview Inn at Sixteen Bayview Street for a special amusement permit, seeing there's nobody from the public here, I will close the public discussion and revert to the decision by the select board.
I make a motion that we accept the application of Sixteen Bayview Inn at Sixteen Bayview Street for a special amusement permit. Second.
Who's in favor? Four, zero again. I, that point, I will close the public hearing and go to the next item on the agenda, which is the, uh, the select board's action to approve, basically, accept the grants and, and of expenditure of matching funds for three, uh, grants. The Island Institute shore-up grant of ten thousand dollars. The Maine Coastal Program Coastal Communications Grant, which is forty. Coastal Communities Grant, forty thousand dollars. Yeah, I can't, I can't communicate. A National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Coastal Resilience Fund Grant of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
I
Do you have a motion?
I would make a motion that we accept each of these grants. And I also want to thank Allison and Audra and anyone else involved in this process profusely. This is super exciting. It's a hu, I think it's just a huge step forward. Um, it shows that we're investing our ti, I mean, our time and our, um, revenue streams other than taxpayer money in, in really looking into these things, and they're important. And I really applaud both of them. Since there are no members of the public here right now to do it, I'll do it. So thank you guys both and everyone else who was involved.
Very well.
I mean, really, it's the project that speaks for itself. And so you don't get these, these grants aren't successful, especially not at like the high federal nationally competitive level, unless the story really tells itself. We show up on all of these maps that identify areas of vulnerability. We have, you know, flood maps and threat maps and all of these things. And so, um, it's really us just recognizing the category that we fall into.
But it's
Mark? Um, Audra, I have a question. Since you've been town manager, how many grants have we gotten approval for?
Geez, I, I don't know.
Can you give me just a, an estimate?
Uh, well, I know we've done three at least.
No, but
The tannery one.
There's tannery, wastewater.
There was the wastewater treatment plant.
Culvert, um, the, um,
Snowball Culvert.
Mm-hmm, that too, yeah.
Um, I don't, there's been a couple more. I forget them.
Quick math, we're talking, we're talking how much money?
Oh, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Well, the, the wastewater treatment plant grant was one point four million, so.
The, the reason I bring it up, um, because I'm the, the one person, the board is here before Audra, uh, and with a different board. And I was frustrated at the time because I used to hear that other towns around us were getting grant for this, grant for that. And we weren't even applying. And since the change in management, um, like we just heard, we've had exceptional million dollars plus grants, which does tremendous service for our population, for our citizens, and saves them huge money and and saves them huge money, and helps us work on our infrastructure and everything to do. So, um, a great, like Jenna said, an amazing job that wasn't done, being done before. And it's so important, so thank you.
Absolutely. It's my job.
Well, it's done, done well. The success rate here is very high.
Do I have a second?
There was a great article in the Bangor Daily News, too, for anybody quickly, that-
Yeah.
Right.
Um, they, uh, really accurately recognized all of the connections to climate change. And it was nice to see the headline, and there was a mention of the Global Covenant of Mayors, and, um, it's, the headline was, uh, "Climate Change Is Real. Here's What Camden Is Doing To Address It." And so it's been nice to connect it to all of our other things, too.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Four, zero. Thank you very much.
And one, one more thing I would like to get a motion on. So in the FY twenty budget, we budgeted thirty thousand dollars in reserve funds and seventy-five thousand dollars in capital improvement funds, um, towards these projects. So I just wanted to get authorization to use those funds from the-
Seventy-five thousand capital funds, what was the other one?
Thirty thousand in reserve funds.
So-motioned.
Say so-motioned, or did you say so-emotioned?
I said so-motioned.
And just to specify, that'll be used for match for these projects.
Understood. Uh, a second?
Second.
Good discussion. All those in favor? Um, next item is the approval of the IGA industrial grade audit for the streetlight conversion, which would packages in our package.
Could I just make a comment? About the, the, an industrial-
Grade audit.
It's not an industrial grade audit. It's an audit of the industrial grade streetlights, right?
Sorry, investment grade audit.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
I said it wrong.
Sorry.
It is written, oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Investment grade audit.
Yeah, so, so really what this is just saying is, you know, when Real Term kind of came to us with the project proposal, when we budgeted for this, that was based on, you know, really rough, broad numbers. So what, what happened since then is when, um, you know, we decided we wanted to do the project, Real Term went out and, um, you know, they've, they pulled all of our, um, electricity bills for streetlight. They did the audit of all the streetlight, drove around, looked for every light, so we know exactly what we have. And they did a bunch of other, you know, desktop and physical research to figure out exactly what the cost of this project is going to be. And so that's really the point of the investment grade audit. And, um, just to put it out there, there has been a little bit of a difference in what we budgeted for versus what came back as a result of the IGA, and also the acquisition of streetlights from CMP. So, and really, we're lucky. It was very close. So we budgeted a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for this project based on Real Term's proposal. And once the IGA was complete, um, it's looking like it's going to be a total of, um, so, sorry.
One fifty-four?
We're about thirteen thousand dollars over that. So it's about a hundred and seventy-three thousand. And that can be attributed to, the buyout from CMP was about six thousand more than we budgeted.
Right.
And, um, just a combination of, you know, different factors in the project made it, made up for about a seven thousand dollar difference. So it's very close. We can easily make up that thirteen thousand dollar difference.
Well, it seems to me, as I agree, the bottom line is you're, we're really, we're, for the photo cells, we're approving a hundred and eighteen thousand and change. Because the number came in at plus the smart controls, and there's two or three, three options for smart controls. So there'd be, it's either one forty-four, one fifty, or one forty-nine.
Yes, and we're, we're doing this collaboratively with five other municipalities. So we all met, and, um, we decided to go with ubiquia. So that's the forty, I believe they're forty.
One forty-three, five eighty-eight.
Yes.
And, uh, are we accepting the recommended spare inventory for fifteen, thirty-six?
So you'll be approving the whole IGA, and that's, it's really, um, just kind of the last step to officially move forward with the project.
I just want to make sure which option we're approving. And it sounds like what we're approving is the photo cells plus ubiquia.
Yes.
Which is, brings it to one forty-three, five eighty-eight.
Correct.
And plus fifteen, thirty-six for, for spares. It says if you do not wish to include spares, please write decline here. I assume we're not writing decline there.
No, we'll, we'll include the fifteen, thirty-six.
Okay. So roughly, the total total is about, uh, one forty-five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um.
Ready for a motion?
No. Uh, I admittedly haven't delved into this as much as some others, and I'm appreciative of those who have. We are not going to do this. I've, I've noticed in some of the other articles about other towns, um, kind of a, a, a more accelerated level of like detailed stuff with the decorative and the Cobra head, or, how is that process being decided here? We're just keeping status quo?
Well, we, yeah, exactly. And we didn't have the same problem that they had where, uh, did you see the pictures of where those decorative lights were? It was like a decorative lighthouse on a utility pole. Um, we don't have that problem here. You know, it's, yeah.
It's a little different.
I mean, yeah, that's not a problem that we've experienced here. So, um-
Is that a problem Rockport currently has?
Oh, you know how they were saying they had, I think, a hundred and sixty or something decorative fixtures?
There's a number.
The majority of those weren't the decorative, you know, downtown type fixtures. It was literally a decorative head mounted on a utility pole.
Exactly.
Like a Cobra head.
They currently have that, or they were planned?
They currently have that. And it's, and they, you know, and as part of-
They're going to see that.
If you drive through Rockland.
There's a picture in the newspaper of it, but you can drive around and find a lot of them, because there's like a hundred and forty or something. Um, but anyway.
So that's why they got all-
Exactly, yeah.
We're just giving everything the same.
Right.
Yeah, pretty much.
And, you know, there was some talk about, do we go and, um, you know, redevelop a policy on getting rid of streetlights in certain areas, or adding streetlights in others? And I knew that if we went about doing that, this project would frankly never be finished, because there's some neighborhoods that want streetlights and some that don't.
Yeah.
So when I was speaking with Dave St. Laurent about this, since we have smart controls and the ability to turn lights down, off, you know, really whatever we want to do with them, I think that's a much better way to manage that than trying to come up with a policy and a process of figuring out where we add or subtract lights.
At this, at this point.
At this point.
I would agree with that, and we'll talk about controls later. But, um, that's, no, they did a great job in this report, I thought. It was very well done, very clear, very concise, and very close to the original package they had, um, pre, pre-audit that they had done.
A couple of things. Uh, I just want to give a heads up to the Energy Committee for, uh, you know, the people that originally went out and sort of looked into this process. Um, so thanks to them. And one of the reasons we did it, uh, we'll save money, but also in terms of our moving forward, saving energy, uh, what I'm reading here, annual savings in kilowatts, seventy-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven, which is a sixty-six percent saving over what we're using for energy now to light the town. Which is, you know, a huge, you know-
Otherwise, this cost would be a hell of a lot higher.
Yeah, a huge, wonderful thing. So ready for-
Yeah, I am, I am.
That's good, that's good, because sometimes we get too much in the habit of just talking about the costs, and thanks for highlighting that, Mark.
Yes, Mark, go ahead.
Um, so I, um, I make a motion that we authorize, um-
Accept, basically, industrial grade audit.
Uh, there you go.
Investment grade.
I'm, I'm looking for the, yeah. I make a motion that we accept the invest, investment grade audit for the town of Camden.
Second.
Discussion? Alls in favor? Four, zero. Um, then the, we to approve or not the endorsement of the National Resources Council of Maine for the extended producer responsibility for plastic packaging, uh, which they provided us with a, what was the term I want to use for what they gave us?
I don't think it's necessarily, is it just?
It's a, it's what?
Plastic.
Yeah, it is, I think. I'm not sure, is what it says here.
Packaging.
Well, why can't I, oh, there it is. Hold on. The endorsement, basically, I don't think it specifies exactly only, it says it excludes plastic, metal, glass, cardboard, constitutes, no, it's thirty to forty percent of Maine's issues. Millions of dollars. Uh, so it, it doesn't sound, if your question was, is it plastic only the interest? No.
Yeah, it's basically dealing with the, um, common packaging that we encounter in the municipal-
Yep.
Waste stream, so.
That's correct. And, and hopefully a process to have the producers share in that cost downstream.
Right, so that they have an incentive to produce packaging that is highly recyclable. Right now, what we have is a situation where the municipalities have to catch up after the fact and constantly deal with this different stream of stuff, whatever the companies come up with, ooh, they've got some kind of great new thing they can put in their, um, in their coffee cup holder. And then we turn around, we're like, oh, shoot, what, you know, what bin does this go in? Is this recyclable?
It gets toast, it gets toast.
And we talked earlier about the microsolid waste budget a little bit. One of the things that's increasing this year, the, um, the amount that we have to subsidize the recycling program. So right now, it's just, um, it's, it's taxpayers that end up really subsidizing the companies and their wasteful packaging. And, um, there are some details still left to be worked-
Quite a few, actually.
Out, but overall, the, the premise is, is very good. And I, I personally have total faith that it can be, will have, for anybody that wants to get into the nitty-gritty of whether, um, you know, number three through seven plastics really count as a, you know, considered a highly recyclable item or not.
There's a lot of devil with details.
But, and, and I love that stuff, and, and not everybody does. But I had a lengthy conversation with Sarah Lakeman, Sarah Nichols now from the Natural Resources Council of Maine, and she also mentioned, um, that the letter of support from Camden is helpful, um, as is that from other towns right now, because the governor's office has just said that they are only accepting, um, comments from those who are in opposition to the bill.
I see.
So in addition to just sending our letter along and voicing support for it, um, and we would definitely want to make that available to our state representative and senator, we should also, um, you know, contact the governor's office and say, hey, we don't really think that's, you know, that's okay. But also was hoping that Audra could think of any other lobbying groups that we might be a part of that would get involved in like the MMA legal affairs legislative.
I would imagine, because of course the, the Service Center Coalition.
Right.
I think they would be very-
Um, do you think that's something that you could maybe try to get them to write a, a letter, or what would be the appropriate?
Yeah, I, I do, I think the MMA Legislative Policy Committee and, um-
The Service Centers Coalition.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll be looking for a couple of things then, and we can discuss it, but to approve for Audra to sign this resolution as drafted here for the town of Camden, and to pursue any other avenues that we think appropriate to support this initiative.
This one, I think it would be nice if we would all sign it as well, as Audra.
Our call. That's fine.
So the resolution would be that, um-
The support of select persons and the, and the town manager would also affect this resolution.
Is it a motion?
So the motion would be that, I don't know if we need to do the, their suggestion.
No, well, signatory, we should.
Make a motion that we endorse, um-
Resolution as drafted here.
Resolution.
And be, and executed by the select board and the town manager.
Second.
Discussion? Alls in favor? Four, zero.
Quick mention.
Sure.
Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, citizen, uh, of Camden, Stephanie Smith, for bringing this to our attention.
Great.
Yep.
Great. On the last item on the agenda is, is again, the last we just did with the harbor committee, but a general discussion about the various fees for Parks and Rec Opera House and, I think that's it, is that correct?
That's it.
We didn't throw, yeah, we didn't throw a snowball. Yeah, the snowball was in there, I thought.
Yeah.
It was in here, yeah.
It's Parks and Rec. Sorry, I confused. Okay, so the first one is?
So really, the only changes are the addition of those two new fees for the reservation of, um, playing fields.
Yeah, and that, and that should be clarified to mean, by the way, it doesn't say per season, it just says fee for adults. So somebody might read it as three hundred dollars per adult.
Mm-hmm.
It's three hundred dollars per team.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just clarifying something.
Yes, yep.
And I have had teams, and I, I don't know that I necessarily agree with this, but I have had teams say to me that they really feel they don't, they're, this is not probably going to go over great with everybody.
I, I think this is, the three hundred dollars is a, it's per team?
Yep.
So each team playing in a league?
For the season.
I think it's-
That's only if, when they're reserving it, though, and it's like they-
They want it every Tuesday night at five o'clock for the season, then, then they pay this fee.
I think, well, how many teams are in the, because if we're talking, I mean, for the, if it's for the league, I can see three hundred dollar thing from, from nothing, but for each team, we're talking, so if there's, say there's eight teams that play in a season on a Tuesday night.
Is it per league or per team? Sorry, Mark, to interrupt, but I thought it was per team. Is it not per league?
Okay, then that would be eight teams, and then we're talking twenty-four hundred dollars, and that seems really excessive to do it per team. I can't, I can't justify that per team. I can, I can see it per league, because for the youth leagues, you're not doing per team, you know, because what about all the teams that come in from?
Well, it actually doesn't make it very clear. It could be per team, based on-
I know, but it would be, Mark Haskell's put a, and the, and the Parks and Rec Committee have put in a, a lot of-
We just did some feedback here, I think you're right.
The, the Budget Committee endorsed their, the premise last year, and I, I know that when it's been explained to me by them, it's made lots of sense, so I would, maybe they could write something up.
But if we're talking, there's eight teams come and play on Tuesday nights where they, you know, it, you know, on Tuesday, it's Camden versus Appleton one day, and Camden versus Hope on another day, and such, and, and for the league, for the league. But if there are eight teams, they're paying twenty-four hundred dollars. That's huge, that's excessive. I think for the league-
You know what, I think, you know, I grew up point marketing, I really believe, as I recall the discussion, the first one is a hundred dollars for youth league.
Right.
Not for a team.
It can't be for teams.
The other one is for, for example, uh, X Y Z softball team, adults. That's three hundred dollars per team.
But that should be per, per league, if, for their, if it's the-
I don't think they have a league.
A lot of them are coming from, they're not even, they're not even Camden residents.
That's correct, that's correct.
And so when you go there and you can't even use the field because some team that's from somewhere else.
I, I, no problem for fee, but in terms of per, per team, you know, that, that needs more clarification.
All right, all right, it's fine.
Because if you have a league coming in, and you have, like I said, if you have eight teams in the league, and they're playing on Tuesday nights.
Yeah, and they have the data, because they, they know every league that's already playing there, and every adult team that's already playing there is a select number of them. And I believe, we'll find out, I believe they discussed it with some of these teams and leagues, but that's-
That's, that's what they said.
We'll, we'll, we'll get clarity on it. The other question, that is a global one, a kind of policy thing in a sense, and that's, as I go down the list, I see certain things that are showing, you know, three or two percent or whatever increase, and I'm wondering-
Sorry, Beth clarified on the discussion above. It's per league, one payment for the season.
Thank you.
For the entire league?
Yes.
The adults, too?
That makes more sense. All right, that's, 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 thank you. I thought that's what it was, I forgot.
But to the, to these increases, they seem kind of miniscule, honestly, um, to, to change something by a couple of dollars.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of this is just trying to account for increases in minimum wage.
I thought they had said they couldn't make any changes because of they had printed thousands and thousands of things.
This is for next year.
Yes. So we approve fees now that go into effects next, next year.
This is for two thousand twenty-one budget.
I got the impression it was like five years of-
I mean, the, the reason I say that is because I look at, you know, inflation and doing all this stuff, but yet the Tobago Nationals is no increase. You know, and, and they don't, we don't have to manage that.
And that's something that's kind of Camden, I mean-
Yeah, I mean, I understand we don't want to scare anybody away, we might, we'd love to get that, but-
Right, but where else are they going to go to the Tobago Nationals?
Well, I mean, it just seems to me that if you're going to do-
It's not like we have a lot of competition on that one.
It, it feels like a little bit cherry picking.
You're not going to go to Rockland for that.
It feels a little, this feels a little bit like cherry picking to me, that's all, for, you know, three percent here and there. I, I don't know, just a comment. I mean, the dollars aren't big, but I'm, I'm sorry, if you go, early bird cams an adult from two ninety-nine to three oh eight. For the difference, I like to play the old trick of two ninety-nine sounds better, you know, to sell, to be, but why, why do I want nine dollars, you know?
But I have to say, you know, doing the three percent-
Yep.
Seems fair. But if you start to want to make bigger increases, then before long, you know, year after year, if you go, oh, let's keep going.
Yep, you're right.
It's going to go up fast. Skiing is very expensive. We're trying to keep this as a reasonable alternative for people to ski that's affordable. And skiing very quickly can get unaffordable for a lot of people in the town.
I think it already is.
So, I see that. So I see that.
I'm opposed to any fee increases at the Snowball except for lockers and.
Yeah, my good feeling, my good feeling is, yeah, I'm not sure we want to, I, I agree with you, Mark, you're right, because if you don't do 3%, now you're gonna do 8% in a year or two, and that's a big jump. And that, but, but on the other hand, do I really want to go for $5, $7 per, for these, these things that really worth it?
It feels smarmy to me, quite honestly, it feels just not like what we're going.
It's hard to even look at with these numbers, it's like.
It is, and it's, well, I guess.
You gotta also, on the expense side of things, a lot of the people that we hire there are minimum wage employees, and minimum wage is increasing.
Yep.
So that's kind of the idea of the fee increase is just to.
Well, if we, if we go that route, then we should be consistent.
It should be across the board.
It should be almost, almost across the board. There are some things they may not want to do, like for rentals and stuff, because that's another entity that's, that's doing all that. But I think, you know, for Tobago Nationals, that's, that's, that's heavy with our labor, I think, isn't it, Audra? Don't we have a lot of labor?
Yeah.
That should be at least included in that.
That actually makes money for us, though.
It does, it absolutely does. Anyhow, I think it's a discussion we just have to have when we finalize, final payment is just, just for eight, seven, eight bucks a ticket, or whatever, it just doesn't seem like enough to me, but.
It gets expensive.
Oh, yeah, it does. Oh, yeah, it does.
I don't think.
It's too expensive.
I don't think, I think it's better to do that than to round it up, oh, let's round it up to the next driver, and then it gets out of hand really quick.
I agree, and I, sometimes I think it's nice to hold steady for a couple of years, and it doesn't kill, and after having a good year, to hold steady, to keep kind of doing what we're doing, and then if we do a fee increase, do it next year, but to kind of do it in good faith, to show that we understand that every year, we can't just skin a little extra eight bucks off you.
Well, this, I mean, this is next year, and it's for the very specific purpose of covering cost increases as a result of minimum wage rise.
And minimum wage to grow up, so I think it makes sense, but I like it, I, I don't care that it's 308 or 306 or whatever it is, you know, for whatever fee, because, you know, we want to hold the line, we just don't want to, you know, well, let's round it up for, you know.
No, I want them not.
I, I have to say, I have one question. Is, is the Snowball the only place that considers seniors 70 years old? I don't know of any other age, any other place where, you know, you know, federal parks are 60, maybe the 62, you know, 65, you know, I don't know, why does the Snowball, why does it make seniors passes at 70?
I don't know, but you're one of the people with the power to change it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, frankly, frankly, this was driven for, you know, frankly, $50 for, $50 for any person that can go to the Camden Snowball of any age is, I've always felt ludicrously low. I don't care if they're 70, 80, or 90. You know, that's, that's why I think that was set up that way, it gets, it can be changed, I agree, but that, that's the, it's the only, to my knowledge, that's the only senior, what is the senior weekend discount? Does that imply the same thing, somebody over 70?
Yeah.
Okay, that's where it gets a little silly. But anyway.
It doesn't say on here that Camden residents are free on Wednesdays, or doesn't it, I must.
That's right, that's something we did last year.
I don't think it does, but I mean.
Needs to be added. It does have, it has a two-hour ticket to be put in, it has a three-hour ticket to be put in, but I don't see, no, you're absolutely right. I also see the 25% discount on daily lift tickets for Camden residents.
Can you tell me what an uphill season pass is?
That would be like the.
And that's something I have, I was gonna ask about as well. That's usually for people that are cross-country skiing, don't use the lifts, and all of a sudden, they start charging people.
Yeah, no, I'm totally opposed to that.
Yeah, I am too, because I.
I'm also opposed to charging five-year-olds when they need a season pass. Like, they're supposed to ski for free, and people go in there and they don't want to have to wait in line every single time to be with their five-year-old. I don't think it says here anywhere what that is, but.
Five-year-olds used to get in, up, up through five, used to get in for free, and they used to get their, they get the pass, so they had the pass.
They get them printed day tickets, and they won't make them a laminated pass, which in my opinion is, people who I've, who have reached out to me are willing to pay, I'm sorry to interrupt, I got quite a few interesting calls about this over the past couple of weeks, but they have been told that a laminated pass can't be printed even for people that are willing to pay administrative fees, which are usually standard of about $30, from what I understand, and.
I thought they were charging $100 for one.
They're charging $100 for the pa, for the pass, but that like, the six-year-old, the five-year-old can, or under five, or under six, can ski for free with their parents, but they have to get a printed day ticket every single time.
Which is so annoying.
But the issue has been one of supervision.
I'm sorry, but the majority of people are not dropping their five-year-old off at the Snowball to.
I don't know anybody.
We can deal with that on an individual basis, if people are dropping their five-year-old off.
From the adults that it's, that he or she is skiing with and has a laminated pass with their photo and their name. I mean, that's so much safer, and I, I won't get into it now, but I, I've heard that this is quite a controversial.
We change it, especially because if you go, one year, because my son skis, I, I don't ski, my wife doesn't ski, my son skis, and one year, we couldn't afford the, the season pass, so we used to get him day tickets when he wanted friends. The time you wait in line for the day tickets, you know, and it's, it's ridiculous.
To add to that line with people that are.
I don't agree with the change, so when we come back and deal with this, there's some changes I'd like to see.
So let's look at a couple of things as we move forward. One is the rationale of the increase across the board. Two is the so-called uphill or skinnying, I believe they call it, which was zero to date, and they're proposing something now, but it sounds like may not be, you know, enough or whatever. And, and also this issue of the six, I think it's 600.
Yeah, 600 right now.
Yeah. And I know, I know, and when Beth mentioned it, she had mentioned about, it was driven by safety issues, no, but we, we'll discuss this part of the approval for this thing next month, but those are the three, I, I think, I heard from you all.
So this uphill season pass, is there an uphill day pass?
Uh, that's, I.
So what?
I don't see it.
So just to go cross-country ski one time, you have to get a?
Well, this, I don't think it's cross-country, it's skinnying, isn't it?
If I leave my house on snowshoes, and I, because I lived in the Snowball, and I cross into the Snowball area, does that mean, you know, that I'm gonna get arrested if I don't have a?
No, you'll be shot.
I, I saw this other thing, it was like, everybody that's on, at the Snowball for any reason is considered a skier. Like, oh my, okay.
No, but to your question, I don't see.
Be a little more welcoming, it was supposed to be a community resource that's accessible.
It's not about money.
And the uphill should look at daytime stuff too, not just season.
No, there should be no charge.
There shouldn't be no charge, if you're gonna hike up the mountain.
If you're not using the lift.
I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying.
I, I don't know any other.
So you're advocating staying with zero?
Yes.
It shouldn't even be a consideration.
I, I don't know, I'm no expert, I.
The whole idea was like, it was an accessible place for winter recreation. We've already done away with sledding, with even, a good part of it now, you can't even walk over there, you can't even go around that gate without like, some kind of, like serious reprimand. And now, so we're making it inaccessible to people a lot, so that it can be a ski place, which is a trade-off, I guess that we understand, but to just keep chipping away of, like, unless you're a.
It's, money is becoming more important than the facility, and that's not the way it should be.
I totally agree.
All right, we'll carry it forward for discussion. I don't know what else to do with it at this point in time. Let's have, bring in uphill rationalization is why we're trying to, where is it costing us? Is it wearing down the slopes because there's 150 people uphill?
Well, I mean, it's.
That's where it's coming from, I think.
I'm not gonna speak to it, I'm not an expert in this, I think, it's better that Beth is here to kind of explain that.
I totally agree. Then to the, what else? Yep, the only other one that's in here is the Opera House.
The one, the one suggestion I would make is to change the letterhead.
My.
And the date from 2018 to 19.
My question is, anything changed?
No, and that's, that's a huge problem, because a bunch of stuff needed to change, not the fees themselves, but.
I would, I would think so, I mean.
I think it's an old logo, and.
No, I don't mean, I'm not attacking the logo, I'm just.
No, the fees themselves are not changing.
They're not gonna be changing.
No.
And things have gone quite well, and, but, letterhead.
And also, you know, I think is all, is part of this, in terms of sort of the rental side of things, the select board, and.
Yep.
You've given Dave a lot of discretion to sort of negotiate with renters, and I think that's been really successful too, so.
But we're not proposing any increase anywhere.
No.
So there's no inflation here?
No.
Actually, they've saved money this year, in terms of costs for employees and things like that, so.
All right. Again, I think just the rationale of why, and the wherefores of, I, I don't, I don't